Okay, welcome to the Amherst Planning Board Wednesday, October 16th, 2019, 7:00 PM. And we'll start the meeting with minutes. I do believe we have one set of minutes that came for Wednesday, September 18th, 2019, 7:00 PM. They were sent. And does anyone have any comments or issues with the minutes? They're long. Thank you. And if no one has any corrections or comments on them, then we could have a motion to pass them?
Move to pass the minutes?
Second. Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Yeah, who's on there? So can we, Chris, only pass them with two?
Three.
Three. Oh, Janet's on there, too. Great. So three, yes. And two abstain. At this time, we'll take public comment. If there could be a show of hands of anyone who's here to talk on something that's not on the agenda, something totally different that they just want to come up and talk for a few minutes. I don't see any hands, so everyone here is for items on the agenda. Great. So it is 7:06, and at 7:05, we had scheduled a public hearing, site plan review and special permits. And I will read the "In accordance with the provisions of MGL Chapter 48, this public hearing has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted. This hearing is being held for the purpose of providing an opportunity for interested citizens to be heard regarding S.P. 2020-02 Amherst College Athletic Field renovation to 12 Hampton, North Hampton Road. Request for site plan review approval for athletic field improvements, including renovation of an existing, existing natural grass field to a synthetic turf, and installation of athletic lighting, asphalt walkways, and spectator seating, fencing, and netting. Map 14C Parcel 13 RN Zoning District. Due to issues related to the eligibility of two members of the planning board to vote on the application, the public hearing for the site plan review for Amherst College Athletic Fields will be opened this evening and immediately continue to a date certain in the future without taking testimony. We hope that this issue will be resolved by the next planning board meeting scheduled for November 6th." This public hearing is now open. Do I hear a motion to continue to November 6th, 2019, at 7:05?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Chris, do you need to say anything? All right, all in favor, raise your hand. And for anyone who came for that item, I apologize, this was beyond our control. So, Chris, we have a 7:15. Should we, what would you suggest we take as a filler?
I think you could take Mr. Reedy and Mr. Roberts, who have a short request for you regarding University Drive, I believe it's 70 University Drive Mixed Use Building, which you approved in 2018.
Okay, so that's item six, Old Business, item A. So it's SPR 2018-11, U Drive LLC 20, I'm sorry, 70 University Drive Mixed Use Building, review and approval of change in location of air conditioning units per conditions number seven and number 13. And I believe we got the conditions tonight on our desk. And if, welcome, if you could both introduce yourselves and go for it, yeah.
All right, as we wait for this to load, thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, I'm Tom Reedy, an attorney with Bacon Wilson here in Amherst, here on behalf of 70 University Drive. With me this evening is the manager of 70 University Drive, Barry Roberts. And so as the chairwoman mentioned, what we are looking to do is to hopefully receive approval from you this evening for a modification to the site plan. So we had originally proposed to have all of the mini-split condenser units on the roof. However, there just wasn't enough room on the roof to put all of those units. And so some of those units ended up outside on, near the first floor, but we believe appropriately screened from view. And once I get this up, I'll be able to show you photographs of where they're located, both on the northerly side and on the easterly side.
So to review, I'll just read, item seven was changes to project and/or substantial changes to any of your site plans or to the exterior of the building shall be submitted to a survey or review and approval prior to the work being completed. The purpose of this bill shall be for planning or to- Approve the change and/or to determine whether the changes are de minimis or significant enough to require modification of the special permit or the site plan review approval. And to read item 11, I mean 13, sorry, yeah, all air conditioning units, communication devices, and all other outside mechanical equipment shall be placed on the roof of the building and not on the exterior walls or within windows. Any equipment, whether located on the ground or on the roof, shall be screened from view and noise muffled with fencing, plantings, or other suitable materials following the approved plans. Ah, perfect timing.
Great, what timing?
Great, we timed that well.
So what you've got here, and I'm not sure if I can zoom in a little bit. There you go. So this is on the, yeah, the southeastern corner of the building, so University Drive, and maybe I'll, I don't know if I have any site plans here. The University Drive is towards your, the left of the screen, right, on the westerly side of the building. So this is tucked away from University Drive. And this has, we've got two of those units. Because of the way that they're made, you can't put them on the ground. You've got to keep them up off of the ground. So I think technically they're on a wall. But I think you have the authority to waive that. And also, we would suggest that these are appropriately screened. And then I'll go to, well, that didn't come out as nice as, let's see if I have other ones.
Can you hit the flip button?
Yes. Couple times.
Almost.
Hang on. So this is along the northerly side. You'll see, we've got some other, some of those-
Yeah, could you just point them out?
Sure.
It's hard to see.
Sure. Oh, I see, there's a glare up there. Where this cursor is, is one of them, two others, another, 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 and then one more. And this is on the easterly side of the building, the northeastern side of the building, looking west. Flip again. Oh, this is the electrical bank. There will be screening. The proposal had screening, but just there was so much going on to get the building up and running and the certificate of occupancy, that that has not been put in yet. Before the ground freezes, it will be put in. It's essentially two walls with clavert siding that mimics exactly what the siding of the building is, that will go in front of that electrical bank to screen it.
Like a fence, kind of with the cladding?
Comes out from the building just like a fence will, but it mimics the siding on a building.
So from the street, you won't see the meters anymore?
You won't see the meters anymore.
Great. Thank you.
And that's taken from the street?
Correct. This is by the entrance, yes. Thank you for the location.
And I actually think there's a couple of deciduous trees planted in front.
There are, yeah. You can see them there, a couple of different places, here, 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 and here. And if, I mean, if you go by the site, I think you'll see, it actually looks pretty good. And once it gets a little bit more vegetated, goes through a growing season, I think it'll look even better. So this is a view from 40 University Drive, the proposed, the restaurant, the one that's under construction right by the hangar. You can see here, you've got one of those units, but otherwise, it's tucked away behind this vegetation. The balance, so those are for the first floor. The second floor and the third floor units are on the roof.
And that's a wetlands?
Correct, yes. So that's never going to come down. That stays exactly how it is. Same, same thing, a little different view. Again, you can see, you know, if you're really peering through, you can see them, but I think we think there's enough vegetation in between. This is probably another flip. Oh, here we go. Another picture like we had before. And so this is up from the other perspective, near, on the other side of the vegetation. So if you're familiar with University Drive, it's got University Drive, a couple of bike paths, a screen of vegetation. And then on the other side of it, there's a detention basin that will actually grow up. This is from just inside that detention basin. So it gives you a easterly looking, or westerly looking, easterly perspective. I think that's about all the photos that we have. I'm happy to, we're happy to answer questions, but we would ask for your, first of all, our apologies to you, and then hopefully your approval of the changes.
Does the board have any questions? Michael?
Yes. General condition seven that Ms. Brestrop, sorry, Ms. Gray Mullen, read suggests that the, the work be approved prior to the work taking place. I understand that the work is already taking place, and that you are in violation of condition number seven.
Yeah, it was something, frankly, that slipped right under the radar. Didn't notice it until Dave Waskevich came out for an inspection and said, well, wait a second, take a look at this condition 13. You've got to have all those on the roof, as you represented you were going to. And we said, oh, boy, you know, let's get in front of the planning board to ask for forgiveness in what we've got here.
So there should be no penalty for your violating this condition?
We would ask that there be no penalty, and it's just an oversight.
Can I ask why they didn't fit on the roof? And are there some up on the roof and some on the-
Yeah, there are significant-
Second and third floor are on the-
Right.
Yeah, if you're going to talk-
So there are 36 units altogether in this building, plus an office space. The top two floors have 24 units altogether. Those 24-unit condensers are on the roof.
Okay. And now it just worked out better to put them on?
I think it was, it's a function of the roof design and the workable, I wish I had a photo of it, and the workable area, the way that it's tucked behind. There's a, there's a little walkway. I think I might have a, I don't know if this will have the, I don't know if this will have the roof line on it. Yeah, so here, you'll see, this is the way the roof is designed. It has that rooftop hatch that you can actually walk out. The condensers are all along the side that I'm moving the mouse right now. I think the original thought was you could put the other condensers on the other side of that and have an aisle in between, but it's not big enough for working area to actually access those condensers if you were to double-load it like that. So they're only on this side. And so that required them to go on the first floor.
So there was a mistake in the design, and it had to be altered?
Yeah.
Okay.
In the field.
In the field. Chris, is this the usual thing that, you know, this happens, it was caught on an inspection, and, and so we just need to approve that this is done in a fine manner and making progress?
That's correct. It would have been better if it had been brought to our attention before they were installed. Apparently, there was an oversight, and the applicant didn't, you know, understand that, didn't understand that condition, or didn't remember that condition, or whatever it was. So the building commissioner, building inspector, Dave Waskevitz, brought it to my attention, and I said that the best course of action would be to bring it to the planning board and show the planning board what happened, and ask the planning board for relief from this condition for these particular units.
Michael?
Was this condition discovered before the certificate of occupancy was issued?
I don't know the date of the certificate of occupancy. I know that it was probably a month ago that we realized that this had happened. It was probably mid-September that we realized that this had happened. So I don't really know. Mr. Reedy probably knows when the certificate of occupancy was issued, or perhaps it hasn't been issued yet, and only a temporary certificate has been issued.
No, there's only, only a temporary certificate of occupancy has issued for this.
Janet?
I'm, a split is an air conditioning unit and a heating unit. And I'm assuming the reason you put it on the roof is to keep the noise away from the tenants. So I'm wondering what the noise level will be along the ground for tenants and people nearby.
Sure. Good question. I think it was probably a little bit more than just noise mitigation. I think it's just functional space and maybe some aesthetics. I've got a couple of mini-splits at my house, and they're, the technology today is just, I mean, it's very quiet. And I think the thought is, if you're using the mini-split, because they're outside of the first-floor units, they're also not going to hopefully have their windows open at the same time. So they're going to have the windows closed. Then they're running the units, so any potential noise is much less. And then I think, so between that, and then you look at the proximity to any abutters, let alone residential abutters, which there really aren't in the, in the area, you know, I think that there's sufficient distance and then screening to buffer any potential noise that there would be.
We just put in three, and they're so quiet, quieter than any kind of air conditioner, yeah.
It's unbelievable, yeah.
Any other, good question. Any other questions from the board? Okay. Does the public, did anyone come here to comment on this? Show of hands. Nobody? Full room? No, okay. So at this point, we could make a motion to accept that this work done is accepted into the SPR. Someone want to make a motion?
I'll move.
Thank you.
Move to accept the modification.
Second. Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor? That's okay. Five, unanimous.
Thank you, and apologies for not catching it sooner.
Don't do it again.
Yeah, no, certainly.
All right, thanks. So we'll move back to our agenda, which is 7:15. We're now at, like, 7:18. And looking for, okay. So much paper. Okay, SPR. Okay, SPR, 2019-08, Javier Campos of Adams and Ruxton for Bank of America, 360 College Street. Announce this public hearing is being continued from July 24th, 2019, and September 18th of 2019. SPR 2019-08, Javier Campos and of Adams and Ruxton for Bank of America, 360 College Street. Request site plan review approval to install new light posts and fixtures to provide better illumination, safety, and security for Bank of America ATM Commercial Zoning District, map 15A Parcel 28. First, Chris, is everyone who's here, like, up, you know, Mullen's rule or whatever, we all up on that, or I can ask it, yeah?
I think Ms. McGowan was not here on the 24th of July. So I don't know if she has-
But she was not a member. Yeah, how does that work?
She was a member of the board, but she wasn't present?
I think that was present.
Oh, you were present?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right. So then everybody is qualified?
Everyone's qualified.
Ms. Chow submitted a statement saying that she had reviewed all of the materials, and it feels that she is eligible to vote. And I believe everybody was here-
Great.
-on the 18th of September. Is it?
Well, excuse me, I was not here on the 18th. I'd be here on prior, previous ones.
Yes. You wrote the letter.
I wrote a note that I think was read in, and I did review, I didn't send you a statement, but I feel like I did review the materials.
Does he need to just write something right now on a piece of paper, saying, okay? Good. I'm asking because there's only five of us, and we want to make sure that we're all in good standing. Okay, so David will write that. So, welcome. If you could introduce yourself and state why you're here, and you can present.
I am not, I'm Javier Campos.
Yeah, that's-
My name is Neil Sander. I'm a engineering engineer. We are engineering partners with GMR Lighting Design and Designing Bank of America, a student program contractor. Essentially, I'm here to answer your questions. I have a background in handling site plans where we upgrade lighting at banks. I've done about 150 of these, mostly throughout the Northeast, as far away as California. So I'm familiar with not only the security requirements for lighting at banks, but also the expectations of the municipalities when we come before you and ask for those improvements. First of all, we recognize that we should apply the site plan in the beginning. We hope you accept that, that it comes to take part. We're willing to come before you, this is, I guess, the third time, and address the concerns that you expressed over the last two planning board hearings. As you know, primary concerns that have been expressed over the last two hearings was the encroachment into the drive aisle parking area at that shopping center by the three-foot pole base. After we discussed that, my team decided that the best way to address that is to remove those pole bases and replace them with direct buried poles. A direct buried pole will be no more than 12 inches wide, which would give us a full 18 and a half, or 18 and a half foot wide two-way drive aisle in that shopping center. It would no longer be in violation of such a concerning law. This is a very old center. It was built somewhere around 1973, '71. It's not reformed in a lot of ways, but it does predate not only current zoning ordinance, but the Department's construction standards. Also, I know there's some concern about the standards at which Bank of America was setting their design. There are approximately 20 states in the United States that regulate the lighting around exterior ATMs and lobby ATMs. Massachusetts is one of them. They do not have numeric standards for those lighting requirements, though. Many states do, including New York and New Hampshire. Bank of America has developed a consolidated lighting security requirement that they apply to all the branches in the regulated states. Basically, that is, at an elevation of 36 inches above grade, that within five feet of every ATM, they need to have 10-foot channels of illumination. Within 50 feet, they have two-foot channels of illumination. If that 50-foot radius extends into the parking lot, that is extended to 60 feet. If the ATMs within 10 feet of the corner of a building, that would be 40 feet down the perpendicular side of the building. All of those areas have to be illuminated at two-foot channels within those radius. In this case, two-foot channels extend all the way to the right of the right of College Street. Obviously, we looked at a number of different scenarios to meet those illumination requirements. Given the limitations of the site, the building is only about 12 feet high. We considered adding roof fixtures. We considered, as you know, higher and brighter lights. I'm actually very impressed with the bank's ability to meet those security standards with only two 15-foot poles at 3,000 Kelvin temperature.
I think, if you could speak closer to the mic, the green light's on, right? Yeah.
Now it's on.
Ah, that's good.
Do you want me to start over?
No, no, I heard that. I'm just trying to make anybody else- It's just better for the video.
Yeah, okay. I also know that you were concerned about the fact the Bank of America was looking only at the area around its ATM. The reality is, the Bank of America is a tenant of this strip mall. We have spoken to the landlord about expanding the proposal. We have not gotten a response from them, but at the same time, we don't want to abandon our proposal and leave it the way it is, where our nighttime survey indicated that it was not in compliance with security regulations, or I'm sorry, security standards for Bank of America. Were we to move the poles to the exterior of the parking lot, at 15 feet, they wouldn't be, even be able to reach the area of concern in front of the ATM. So essentially, where we have them now in the design we're presenting is the most efficient and cost-effective solution. I know there was also some concern about the color of the lights. We are proposing to reduce them to 3,000 Kelvin, which is a slightly yellower color. This is, as Ms. Brestrop said, an emerging village center. And this is a good step forward in giving this corner that feel. The property across the street on both sides and the streetlights are all whiter, 4,000 Kelvin LED or fluorescent light in those freestanding light poles. Also, I know there's some concern about autos backing into the poles where they're located. This is kind of a catch-22. We think the poles are actually an advantage. There's currently no protection for pedestrians on that sidewalk. Makes autos backing out of parking spaces less likely to hit people who might be walking down the street at that location. If there's any additional concerns, I think that, I hope that I've hit everything that you've expressed at previous planning board hearings. I did read Mr. Levinstein's letter and the minutes from the last couple of meetings. So I think, you know, we've hit all of the major issues, unless there's something that you want me to specifically address.
Any, thank you. Any questions from the board? David?
Thanks for your update. Do you have pictures of the proposed poles? What do they look like? I don't know what they look like. And I am worried about creating-
Well-
Those, those bases, I think, create hazards for fender benders or worse.
Certainly.
And not knowing, not having a picture of the poles, it's hard to know whether that concern has been addressed.
Well, the pole would essentially be a single-unit pole. I mean, we, we haven't discussed aesthetics. I know you probably have a certain look you want to get out of the direct buried pole. You know, as an emerging village center, there's probably some particular aesthetic. But, you know, we haven't proposed any particular look. We'd rather get your feedback on that. If that's something, you know, you're willing to give a conditional approval on, assuming that we can work something out with, you know, the town engineer and the town planner.
Want to follow up?
So, so the proposal, though, where those bases are, the poles would, those would be removed, but the poles would be placed still there?
Yes.
So within the parking lot, not in the sidewalk or on the-
Correct.
-public way?
Correct. At that location, the property line follows the curb. So we would be able to put those direct buried poles right up against the curb and get a full 18 and a half foot wide aisle.
You said against the curb. There's no curb.
There is-
You mean the side, it goes flush?
Yeah.
And how would you mount the pole to the parking lot? There's some kind of footer? And how high is it?
Yes.
Is it bolts?
Well, a direct buried pole, basically, we dig a hole, stick the pole in it, and backfill and pave around it. So there's no, there's no footer, you know?
Is there concrete poured around it? I'm just saying, if a car hits that, there's not very good stability with that.
Yeah. Well, if, if it delays your concerns, you know, we could certainly put bollards in front of it. Even with a six-inch bollard, we'd still have a full 18-foot drive aisle in the parking lot.
What would be the diameter of the bollards?
Bollards would be six inches.
And the pole, you're thinking, did you say 12 inches?
Twelve inches. Yes. As I measured it tonight, there's 38 feet between the sidewalk in front of the building and the sidewalk along the road. There are currently six-inch bollards along the building. So with an 18- So with an 18-foot parking space and an 18-foot drive aisle, we have two feet to play with.
Any other questions? What current, oh, Maria, go ahead.
The two-foot, oh, sorry, the two-foot candles at 50-foot radius-
Yes.
-that's a standard Bank of America setup?
Yes. It's a standard they've developed based on regulations in other states. Massachusetts doesn't have numeric standards, per se, but since it is a regulated state, they want to bring their branches into compliance. There has been a bill presented in the Assembly that's stalled for the last few years, and if that ever gets approved, they, you know, don't want to have to come back and do this later.
So you're saying it will eventually be a standard Massachusetts legislation as far as the two-foot candles at 50-foot radius?
It may be. There is a bill before the legislature that would establish that. Right now, state law only requires, quote, "adequate lighting."
So what, right now, currently lights the parking lot?
Right now, there are soffit lights under the canopy in front of the shopping center, and that's essentially it. They get light from the streetlights across the street, but there's nothing else on the north side of College Street. There are two floodlights located on the pole at the corner of College and East. I spoke to the proprietors of the dry cleaner and one of the employees at the tax prep place tonight. None of the three of them have ever seen that light on, or at least did not recall ever seeing that light on.
And you said you spoke to the landlord, and they didn't want to get involved at all or fix the lighting?
We haven't gotten a response yet.
No response?
Right. We've opened the conversation, we haven't gotten a response.
Chris, has the town reached out at all to the owner of this strip mall?
No, the town hasn't reached out. It's not a local owner. I think it's Boston-based. May I ask a question?
Yeah.
I think I have an image of the light that was originally proposed. I didn't bring it here, but I have it in my office. Would you like me to go and get it?
I, would it be the same pole? And Cobra head is what was proposed before, and you're just putting it on the ground? Or you're going to pick a more rigorous diameter pole setup?
It would not be the same pole, because the pole was previously proposed, was designed to be bolted into a footer.
Alright, a bollard, no.
Right.
Okay, thanks. Can I just go back to Chris first? Yeah, Chris?
So I just wondered if they're not going to use the pole that they already submitted?
They're not.
You probably would like to see what pole they are going to be using.
And does the members have any comments on the option of bollards? Would you want to see those? And Janet?
So, at the, one of the hearings, I've lost track, we, people on the planning board were interested in the same kind of lighting fixture as across the street at Florence Bank, to kind of give it a uniform look, and I think that was seen as pleasant and-
Or similar, yeah.
Yeah. And then the issue with the bollard is, what if someone does back in? It protects the light, but it doesn't really protect the car. Is that it, so?
Essentially, yes.
Okay.
And I know you're working for the Bank of America as a client, and you're, but had it been discussed at all about adding another lighter too and having three or four poles? I know you're saying you can't spread these two out. I still wonder if the one to the east could move to the other, not, it was never asked to move to the corners of the property. It was just to swing them to the other sides of the driveway.
Okay.
And if that couldn't happen on the one to the west, could the one to the east? I think when you do the photovoltaic, it would still, the foot candles would still be high enough.
I think we could look at that. We may have a bit of a dark spot in the middle. These are only 15-foot-high poles, and especially at 3,000 Kelvin, they don't generate as much illumination as a whiter light would. But that's certainly something that we could look at.
What do you have for lumens?
For luminants?
Yeah, lumen, like, what, how bright of a light, you know? Is it a mid-range right now, or?
We typically spec 4,000 Kelvin lights, but in this case, we've gone-
Yeah.
Yeah, in this case, we've gone down to 3,000, which don't generate-
So that's the color. I was wondering about the brightness.
I don't have the answer to that.
The lumens, yeah, so we would-
Yeah, I can-
That's another way to control and play with that when you're playing with your modeling.
Mm-hmm. And really, at the end of the day, what we're most concerned about is the illumination at grade, the foot candles, more than how much we're putting out. So it-
Well, unfortunately, you know, we still have to look at this. I know you're not supposed to solve all the problems-
Mm-hmm.
-of your landlord, who's not responding and obviously has not been doing their due diligence for years. But you've walked into a situation where we have a new restaurant going in, it's, you're right, it's an old oddly designed, we would never design a parking lot like this now. But there's homeless living, I don't know if you know, in the back and on the sides, and it's very dark. And so what you've done is you've just focused it on, for your clients' needs. But, so we're going to send you back, because we need, you know, to see the poles, how, you know, how they're going to be mounted, the Cobra heads you're picking, we need to know the lumens, and rerun your calc again. And I'm interested in knowing if you can move the pole to the east, the one on the right, and the option of adding another one or two to create a little bit more light. Obviously, we still want the light shining mostly on the property, as you know. But it's just hard for us to okay something that is still got a safety issue. So Bank of America thinks they're safe, but what if somebody pulls up in a, in a big truck, like a dual cab, right? They're going to park over on the left, because they can't park in front of the building. And so their customer has to walk through a dark area.
Okay.
Is there anything else that I miss that they need to go back and get? David?
I just sort of have a general question of, you're a tenant on a piece of property, proposing to make, you know, material fixture, fixed changes to that property without the property owners say so?
We do have their consent to make these changes.
Uh-huh.
But engaging them to do additional work, we haven't gotten a response to that yet.
And you've submitted that consent to make these changes to the planning department or somebody?
The owner did sign the application form for the original application.
Okay. Then that concerns, no.
Michael?
Well, it is sort of. Who owns these instruments once they're put in place? Does the Bank of America own them, or does the property owner own them?
That's a good question. I don't know the answer to it.
Who maintains them?
Again, I don't know the answer to that.
Well, I think we better know the answers to that question before we vote on this.
Okay.
Janet, sorry.
So I think this is my third hearing on this. I'd like a really clear plan with specifics that we could vote on. And so I think those questions are good questions, like, what do the poles look like? You know, can they be moved? Where are some options? Things like that. I think, I just think, I'd love to wrap this up.
Okay. Alright.
But basically, I'm not sure what I'd be voting on at this point, so.
Yeah. Any other comments? Is there anyone here in the public who wanted to speak on this? Show of hands. I don't see anyone. Chris, does that seem reasonable? And do you want to schedule a date at this point to continue this to a specific?
Sure.
Like our next meeting, which is, what are the next two dates? And-
The next meeting is November 6th. You've already got Amherst College Fields. You may have a marijuana cultivation, and, didn't you just continue something? Oh, yeah, that was, that was the Amherst College Fields, yeah. So, anyway.
And that would be the 6th?
Yeah, so you have the option of the 20th.
6th or the 20th?
Yeah.
Yes, Michael?
If the applicant is having difficulty contacting the owner of the property, it seems to me that maybe we ought to schedule the hearing, the continuation of the hearing, at some point after the applicant has managed to contact the property owner and resolve this question between the two of you, before you bring the answer to us. So I would suggest that we continue the hearing indefinitely until such time as the applicant wants to reopen it, having gotten the information.
You really need to find a date certain, but if you continue it to either the 6th or the 20th of November, you then have the option of continuing it further if the appropriate information isn't available.
So your choice, 6th or 20th?
I'm going to defer this to Mr. Sharkey.
The 6th is good for me.
6th?
Sure.
Alright, November 6th, please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And if you have any questions as you go along, you know, please contact the director of planning, so, because we, we want you to-
Okay.
Be done.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Are you going to move to do so?
Oh, yeah, I need, so now I'm, okay. I need a motion to continue to the 6th of November.
So moved?
Second.
Two seconds.
Thirds.
Any discussion? Okay, if not, a show of hands, all in favor, and that is unanimous. Okay. So we're going to move to item four, review and recommendations for zoning Board of Appeals, ZBA FY 2020-11, Town of Amherst Solar LLC, 740 Bel, excuse me, Belchertown Road. Request a special permit to construct a 2.5-megawatt DC solar energy system on eight-plus acres of a 56.21-plus acre, plus or minus acre parcel, and for the modification of height and setback requirements for the proposed perimeter fence located in the front, side, and rear yards, as identified under Section 3.340.0, comma, 6.29, and 10.38 of the zoning bylaw located at 740 Belchertown Road, MAP 18D, Parcel 23, Low Density Residence R-LD, Zoning District, and for the modification of the front, side, and rear setback requirements for the proposed perimeter fence as identified under Section 6.29 and 10.38 of the zoning bylaw located, the property identified as Belchertown Road, MAP 21B, Parcel 8, Professional Research Park, PPR, Zoning District. Are there any conflicts or disclosures from the board? So if, welcome, and if you could introduce yourselves, both of you. Make sure the little green lights are on your mics, and, and welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. My name is Daniel Band.
You need to push the green button.
Oh, yeah, is it on? There it is.
Ah, thank you. So my name is Daniel Band. I work with a developer, Cypress Creek Renewables.
Steve Loss, I'm a civil engineer with TRC Engineers.
Welcome. So do you have a presentation?
We do, yep.
Do you need anything on the screen?
Sure. If it's preloaded, we can look at the site plan. We don't. I can also give a presentation, and we have a paper copy as well.
So we have some things.
I could ask the Conservation Commission Representative Stephanie Chicarella if she could go and put the drawings on a thumb drive and bring them in? Would that be possible, Ms. Chicarella?
Sure, yep.
I don't know if I have the most recent.
There's something more I can put the plan up on. I can put the plan up there, we need an updated one, but I think what you have is probably good.
Sorry about that. We thought they'd be preloaded. I can also give a presentation beforehand, before we jump into the site plan.
And we can also tell you, so we do have a set of plans, so you can refer to these.
Sure.
We just try to do the, you know, for the video and obviously for the audience. Chris, are there extra one of these in the back? So if any of you want to grab a set of those, you can look, and then if she shows up, great, so.
So I can give a brief overview of the basics of the project-
Great.
-run through the benefits that this project will bring to town, and then outline its features and design on the site plan.
If you could speak up, or is the green light definitely on? Yeah.
So this project is located at 740 Belchertown Road. That's the current transfer station, the former landfill. It is decommissioned now. Cypress Creek and the town came to an agreement in January to develop a four-megawatt DC project on the site. This will be on top of the landfill cap, so it'll be a ballasted system instead of ground-mounted systems where you actually mount the array within the ground. This will be balanced, ballasted essentially on top of the cap. So under the town's bylaws, this is allowable through a special use permit through the ZBA. And this project will bring many benefits to the town. So in addition to the fact that this is a great reuse of a landfill project, property, this will also bring substantial amounts every year in terms of the agreement. We're planning to spend about $3.1 million in local spending during construction of the project, and the project will offset about 2,100 tons of CO2 per year, which is enough clean energy to power 600 homes. In addition, while this is a decommissioned landfill, there is the potential for the state-listed grasshopper sparrow species on the site. So the town and us as the developers came to an agreement, essentially to protect the southern landfill as habitat for that species, and as part of that, will give a stewardship fund to be, for it to be protected in perpetuity. So that's another benefit essentially to the project, that, you know, this is also habitat protection as part of the project.
And what does that entail? What does that mean?
So we need to essentially mitigate for displacing the grasshopper sparrow. There have been none that have been seen on the landfill site, but since it has the characteristics, it's a, it's a grassy meadow essentially, natural heritage is requiring us to mitigate by protecting that southern landfill in perpetuity. So we're essentially protecting two to one in terms of acreage.
Okay, great. I know you're getting close to needing those drawings, so.
Sure. But before we jump into that, does anyone have any questions on the benefits this project will bring to town? The basics, or anything about protecting the state-listed species?
So, how is it that you're going to protect the sparrow? You're going to be contributing to a fund, is that, did I understand that correctly?
That's correct. So the southern landfill, it's actually the older landfill, will be protected as habitat for that species in the future. We're given a substantial contribution to Kestrel Land Trust, and they'll essentially maintain that property for that species in perpetuity. Okay. So we could jump into the site plan here. So as you, as you can see, currently, this is the decommissioned landfill. It's a grassy meadow on top. There is a road that essentially rings around the property. We'll be using that existing road. So this is our plan right here. It's four-megawatt DC. This will be a ballasted system, so the racks will essentially be placed on top of concrete blocks. There will be no digging within the landfill, and this is being permitted through DEP to make sure that, you know, everything is done in accordance with their regulations. The, the point of interconnection will be down here. So this is where the project essentially interconnects with the utility grid, and then essentially, maintenance will come in through here. There's an existing road right here. The gate will be right around here, and then they'll go around and up on top of the landfill right here. So we'll be using the existing road. We'll be improving the road to go up on top of the landfill, and then doing minor grading for essentially the point of interconnection right here and the inverter pad over here. But otherwise, it's very minimal grading, hardly any disturbance for this project, to be honest. And one, one benefit to this project is we're planning to propose essentially pollinator species. There will be pollinator flowers up here, and the benefit of that is they help to stabilize pollinator species, so bees and other pollinators. That would then improve yields throughout the area in terms of local agriculture. So we pioneered this in New York. We were the first developer to do this in New York, and we have a lot of it- and we have a lot of experience making sure that we get the right mix of pollinator flowers and that it really helps the local species essentially. So with that, I'll, I'll stop and answer any questions.
Okay. I'll open it to the board. Anyone have some questions? Maria?
Did you say what was happening to the transfer station?
So, so there won't be any change to, to the transfer station. It'll operate as it is. The project will essentially be fenced off from that transfer station to make sure that there's no public access to the project. That's a federal guideline.
And are there connections underground when it, like, I assume that goes onto the road there?
It, it'll all be overhead here.
Yeah, and then, yeah.
And then overhead from here to the, the point of interconnection right there.
So, over the driveway?
I believe that's correct, right?
Yes. So, how high will that be set because trucks, you know, for scrap metal and big trucks go in there? How high will that be?
I don't know the exact height, but they'll be sure to make sure that it's high enough. I mean, we, we can coordinate that with the town.
So, there's light poles?
Utility poles.
Utility poles, are they?
Correct.
I'm sorry, they're like so small, it's hard to-
Yep, there, there will be six poles. This is a standard pole configuration, so essentially the first three are the utilities poles that they would maintain, and then the last three would be our poles.
And poles going across the road?
So, so the line would connect up to the, to the inverter pad right here.
Okay, so what's on the inverter pad?
So, the, the inverter pad includes the inverter and then an energy storage system, so this will have a battery. We've consulted with the fire department to make sure that they're okay with how we're essentially configuring the battery, and they have a special essentially plan in order to be able to connect up any water that they would need to pump into the battery in an adverse event, and we've included that here.
Is that fenced?
The, the whole pad is fenced, that's correct.
How high is that fence?
That fence would also be seven feet.
I just have a question on the, the limits of no disturbance that are up. How are they determined, and is no like none, like, so, like, if you're installing these, you can't even walk in those areas, or?
The no disturbed areas, well, at least with the gas wells, we, we are proposing to ring orange construction fencing around, like a ten, ten-foot no disturb. There's no disturbed areas, we can do the same thing.
If you could use the mouse and just sort of point to those areas, so people probably don't know what we're talking about.
What we'll probably do is we'll have a compost filter sock we have for erosion control, like the tube compost sock, just to protect for erosion control, and that would keep construction out of there as well. But, you know, if it's a, a big concern, we can propose the orange construction fencing as well. But I think the, I think the, the compost sock would keep everybody out of there.
Janet?
I have a question about neighbors and screening. Will anyone in, in the houses around there be able to see the fence or the array, or will there be trees planted?
I, I've walked the site, the whole perimeter of the site. There, there are pretty good existing forests there right now. There's a lot of evergreens. I'm not sure if those were planted by the town originally in order to essentially screen the landfill in the first place, but fortunately for this project, there are a lot of evergreens already around the site. And then there's also about 500 feet from the array to any of the closest houses.
So, people won't be able to see it, or?
It, it's unlikely they would.
The other question I have is, I sort of don't understand who the Town of Amherst Solar LLC is, and, and then just the deal, like, how much is Amherst making money, is, how much are you giving to Kestrel? All that kind of stuff, kind of just the whole package.
Do you want to come forward and introduce yourself, and if one of you could just slide over, yeah, thanks. Look at the party. All these gentlemen, oh geez, and you're-
So, I can be relatively quick. So, Stephanie Chicarella, I'm the Sustainability Coordinator for the town, and I've been working on this project for, oh, many, many, many years. So, the Amherst Solar LLC is actually the entity that purchased the project from Sun Edison. That's just the name that they chose to name the, the LLC. So, it's not actually a town project, so that, that's just the name of the company that purchased it from Sun Edison. It's a private company.
But do we reap any of the benefits, or?
So, for, so it was a power purchase agreement that was made with the town, so that the town is leasing the landfill space for this private entity to install the array. The town will get a reduced electricity rate as well as a payment in lieu of taxes. So, it's estimated, this is an estimated cost, that it's a 30-year lease agreement for the first 20 years. Net savings to the town would be in the magnitude of just over $100,000 per year, and for years 20 through 30, it would be roughly $70,000.
Before you leave, is the town paying the interconnection fee, or is the corporation paying the fee?
The corporation is-
We would pay that.
Has that fee been negotiated and settled?
We should have received that fee already. Eversource West is a little bit late getting it to us, but-
Did you say that again? I missed, there's a door slamming, I missed you.
So, so the deadline has passed for them to send that to us. They, they've told us they're going to send the fee essentially in the next week or two. So, so we're not anticipating a very high fee. The, the substation that we're connecting to is in very congested, but we should be getting that in the next one to two weeks.
But you do not yet have a signed contract?
We don't yet.
So, what's the pilot payment, and what's the reduction or the savings per year for? I mean, no, electricity costs go up and down, but I just, all the numbers you have, I'd love to hear.
Sure. So, the, the payment in lieu of taxes is basically, so they're leasing the land. So, instead of a tax rate, they're basically making a payment to the town for leasing the space to install their project. I, I don't, I, off the top of my head, I don't have that figure, but roughly the savings, as I said, the savings is estimated at roughly over $100,000 per year for the first 20 years. I don't have the payment exactly. And then the reduced electricity rate will depend on what the agreement is through the SMART program, but I think the way the SMART program is designed is that we would get, an off-taker would receive like a penny less than what the basic service rate is. So, it's sort of a guaranteed, at least one cent below the basic service rate in savings for electricity per kilowatt hour.
Any other questions from the board? Again, a reminder, this is the ZBA's issue, so we're more just thinking of any concerns we have and want to inform the ZBA. Yeah, David?
At a different solar farm somewhere else in town. There was a concern that because it borders on pretty areas, as this does, that there are other critters besides flying ones that might live and go across the land. And so, the fencing was not down to the ground. It appears, as I understand, as I'm reading the plans, that the intention is to have the fencing go from the ground up to, is there any, is there a concern that there are other kinds of animals that do travel across this space that will be disrupted and displaced because of the fencing that's being put in?
Frankly, we, we've gone back and forth over whether or not to put wildlife-friendly fencing here. Our understanding is that the town would prefer not to have wildlife-friendly fencing on the southern landfill, because that will be adjacent to the dog park, and we prefer for the dogs not to burrow under the fence and then start, you know, digging around on the landfill cap. Depending on what the town ultimately wants to see, we, we could propose wildlife-friendly fencing, but right now we're proposing a five-foot fence on the southern landfill that goes to the ground, and then essentially using the existing fence on the northern landfill, putting a one-foot topper on top, and then having a seven-foot fence that connects up essentially the two areas of fencing. So, that would be the connection right there.
Behind, that's behind the current transfer station, essentially.
That's correct, yep.
Thank you.
Chris?
So, the fence that's going to have the one-foot topper, how, how high is it now?
It's six feet currently, and we would need to put it at seven feet in order to comply with National Electric Code.
And, and is barbed wire also required to top that?
It's not, and we're changing from barbed wire to essentially a more aesthetically pleasing fence topper.
Good.
Any other questions? Any other thoughts from the board? Anything we want to recommend to the ZBA? Do we want to recommend that we don't see any issues, or do we have any issues? Chris?
Are you going to open it up for public comment?
Yeah. So, the board, we're good with just, so far, no other issues. Okay, good. Raise of hands if there's any of the public who are here to ask, talk. I see one hand, so we're going to ask her to come up. If one of you, you don't both have, but if, because you might want to answer the question or not. So, welcome, and if you could just say like your name, and if you're a resident, and ask your question.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Hall. I live at 76 Stony Hill Road, so I'm not as close as, say, the Logtown Road residents would be, but I consider myself still to be somewhat of an abutter to this project, and I, I've got a number of concerns. One of them is in relation, and I'll bring this up because I think it's actually more minor, in relation to the suggestion that bees and pollinator specie flowers would help in some way. But I've been studying EMFs and RFs for quite a while. I'm part of a group in Massachusetts called Massachusetts for Safe Technology, and we've been testifying at the State House and bringing bills forward to try to help people who need to live in areas where there's mitigation for EMF and, and dirty frequencies, dirty electric and that kind of thing. And my understanding is that bees, part of the reason for the bee decline may in fact be excess of EMF, that it, it totally disrupts their ability to find their way back to the nest. So, the idea that a project like this might attract pollinators really seems strange to me. I, this is the first time I've ever heard anything like this. But that's, to me, more minor as compared with my main concern, and my main concern is that this is going to be feeding into Eversource, and of course I have Eversource, like everybody else in Amherst, for my electric supplier, and I will say that Eversource apparently has a history of providing poor-quality electric to us, and I hired a commercial electrician to come to my house and monitor the electric wires in my house on my circuit breaker box for three weeks with a, with a standard, an industry-standard fluke meter, and then they gave me a flash drive, which I'd be happy to lend to people who are technical people and could understand this, of what was going on with the power in my house. And what they found was that there were significant amounts of high-frequency voltage transients, and they thought that it might be related to the radio frequency meters that we have on our houses. They're not smart meters, but they're radio frequency meters feeding that RF back into the wiring in the house and creating what's called dirty electric or high-frequency voltage, voltage transients. And what that does is it disturbs the sine waves on our house. So, we have a lot of peaks and trowes, and you can see it in the visuals that are created on this flash drive, and they have the effect of increasing our billing rates because we are billed by Eversource based on those peaks and trows. It puts us into a different formula if there are high peaks and low trows. This is something that, as far as I know, no one's been addressing with Eversource, and I think that this project really concerns me because a solar, solar panels are known to have, to create a lot of this kind of harmonics in, back into the grid. And being that I'm going to be so close to this, I'm worried again that my, my power quality in my house is going to be reduced, and that even if, you know, we're getting one cent off, the kilowatt hour, I guess, is what was suggested, it may be that it's changing the quality of the power that we're getting in our houses to the extent that we wind up paying more on our electric. And that is something that requires technical expertise that I don't have, and, but I understand it well enough to speak for it, and I have to say that, you know, the, the, what we are supposed to have is 60 cycles per second or hertz frequency on the typical house wiring, but a lot of these solar arrays put fundamental frequency of dirty electric coming from the solar system inverters of 20,000 hertz, which would have harmonics of 40 kilohertz. That's, that's, that's a very strong increase if it, it does in fact do that. Now, according to what I've read, the dirty electric is the hardest form of EMF to measure and mitigate because it's caused by many sources. I mean, it's caused not just by solar arrays, or, you know, it's caused by, by dimmer switches, it's caused by various, variable-speed energy-saving motors on furnaces, it's caused by poor LED lighting, but most famously, it's caused from chip-based switch-mode power supply transformers, which are used in these solar arrays, especially in these large installation of solar farms. And there are certain companies that are better at mitigating this kind of thing. It can apparently be mitigated to a great extent. But my question that I think you should have right from the get-go for these, for these people who want to bring this in, is what exactly are they going to use for their technology? Because, again, certain models are much better than other models. For example, the articles I've been reading are saying that the Outback brand inverter, which is used often on homes, not just in, in solar farms, is particularly bad, but then there's, there are other models like Sunny Boy, which is a German company that produces, again, solar arrays for homes, that is much better. It's, they're apparently aware of the phenomena, and they've said that they've designated their inverters to minimize this effect. So, I, again, I would just caution the boards, the zoning board and the planning board, to, from the very beginning, get some kind of consultation from people who are really in the know about the electronics with these and whether they are using inverters and switch mode, you know, whatever the technology is that they're using, that it, that it not feed back dirty electric into our homes, basically. I share a transformer with three other people, so there are four of us on a transformer, and I know for a fact that I'm getting some of the harmonics from their house because of this commercial electricians who did the monitoring for me.
Right. Thank you for that.
Sure.
Some of that was pretty heavy. It went over even my head, but hopefully the experts here, I'll, so just to paraphrase what I think you're asking, because a lot of it has to do with Eversource and, and the grid itself, which obviously they're just building a solar farm that will contribute to the grid. But I do know from some of the documentation they gave us, they, it does talk about EMF. If you could address that, especially the inverter and distances, and I'm not sure if you, there might be transformers with the connection with Eversource, but, so if, if you want to address some of that. And Ms. Hall, thank you for coming up.
Absolutely. So, just speaking a little bit about EMFs, we have gotten this concern before. So, so I'll essentially re- So I'll essentially reuse some base kind of facts to level set here. The International Commission on Non-Ionizing Radiation Protection recommends a limit of, it's 833 milligauss. That's the upper limit of what's safe for humans. A hundred to 150--
What is that unit?
Milligauss. So it's milli, T-A-U-S-S. Essentially, 100 to 150 feet away from the inverter, which is the largest source of EMFs in this project, you're looking at .5 milligauss. So it's orders of magnitude smaller than, you know, the recommended limit. Just by comparison, your microwave would emit about three to eight milligauss, about three feet away. So your microwave, you know, contributes to more EMFs than the inverter does. I brought some background reading materials, if you want to see them. I can input them in the record. But we also have a report by the Massachusetts Clean Energy Center, because this is a question they've also gotten from the public in the past, that essentially took measurements of five projects around Massachusetts, took measurements of the EMFs, you know, certain distances away from the project and the inverter, and essentially showed that it's more or less background noise in terms of the EMFs emitted.
That could be helpful. Could you send that to Ms. Bestrop? And then could that, where could you put that on the website? And you can just nod Ms. Hall, but could you get that information off the website? Or?
I'm also happy to give her a paper copy, too.
Could Ms. Hall, do you have an extra?
I do, yeah.
Oh, that would be great. But you will send it to Chris?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Is there anyone else in the public here to speak or ask a question? I don't see any hands. I'll come back to the board. Any new questions or issues? Janet?
I want to say I think it's a great place to put a solar field because there's not much use for this land. And it's not visually in anyone's way. I was going to make a plea for, I know you're letting small animals in through the fence and you're keeping out big animals, but I think it would be nice if medium-sized animals could use this as habitat or territory. And then also, I know this isn't easy, but if you did grazing sheep over, you know, a big lawnmower, that probably would be great, too. I know it's hard to find sheep to graze on fields, because I lived near a field and we lost our sheep many years ago. So I just wanted to put a plea in for, you know, it would help fertilize the field and reduce carbon emissions further. But I think it's a fantastic idea, so.
Yeah, we've done sheep on a few projects in the past. We'd consider it here, except that it's a landfill cap and DEP probably wouldn't go for it.
Yeah. Because the sheep could go into the areas of where you, where there's probably like some integrity problem with the cap or whatever, so.
We wouldn't want them digging into the cap.
That's why you can't plant trees or anything there either, even though the landfill's like a hill, right? And people might see it. You can't plant stuff on it.
You can basically be solar, and that's about it.
That's, and that's, it's great you're doing the blocks, and that's why you're not even putting in like foundations or bases. But back on what you were saying, I do, my only thing about not putting, I don't know if you could put wildlife fencing in certain areas. My fear is like, you know, over time, over the decades, integrity of the fences, you know, degrade and a medium-sized animal could get in there. And then you can't always find the same hole you got in, or, you know, if there's some, is there any benefit, or have you done that anywhere else where you don't have to have the wildlife fence all over but in certain places?
We have done it in selective portions before. We could consider that here. I think it would also be a good discussion to have with the ZBA.
Okay, so maybe that's something we could, if you're in agreement, the board, that we could just ask that question, and you could, if they choose to ask it, you could address it.
Sure.
Besides maybe putting some appropriate wildlife fence, is there anything else we want to tell the ZBA? Or are we good? I think we're good. So Chris, do we just send that to them, or do we have to make a motion? What do they want from us?
It's probably a good idea if you make a motion that you would recommend approval of this project with the recommendation that they consider wildlife fence.
Okay. How's that sound? Someone want to make that motion?
Sure, I move that we reviewed and recommended this and that we ask you to consider the use of wildlife.
Any further discussion? Oh, David?
No, I thought I was--
Oh. All in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, great. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, board.
Thank you.
And I hope you heal fast with that, just a little break.
Minor break.
Thank you.
Okay, still a lot of people here. So we're going to, first, we have to do item five, planning and zoning. Does someone want to give a zoning subcommittee report? One of the three of you.
Should we do the--
Do you think it will be long?
Yes.
Okay, it's going to be long, so we'll table that. So we'll move to item six, old business, and we're going to go with SUB 1989-13, Amherst Hills, Tofino Associates Attorney James Master Alexis, resident of Amherst Hills, to present request to rescind release of lots. So welcome. If you could introduce yourself again.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chairwoman. Good evening, members of the board. My name's James Master Alexis, and I live at 35 Linden Ridge Road in Amherst. I am an attorney, but I live in this neighborhood, and I'm here to help and support our neighborhood in a problem. And we're here to ask for your help. We're here to ask for your help and tell you about something that happened that I think if you knew the facts of the matter, you would not have approved the release of lots for sale on May 1st of this year. And with that, Madam Chairwoman, I just want to say, I'm here with my neighbors, and if you will allow me, I'd just like to ask everyone from Amherst Hills here to raise their hand if you're here from Amherst Hills. Okay, great, thanks. So I have everything that I'm going to refer to tonight. I have copies for everybody. But I just want to state for the record here. What happened here is this, and my motion is here to rescind your vote on May 1st of this year pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81W, that allows planning boards to rescind or modify a vote, okay? That rescission or modification would not apply to any lots that have been sold in good faith. On May 1st, you released 13 lots. Four of those lots were sold in good faith. This motion does not deal with or concern those four lots. So we're asking that your decision concern only the nine lots that are remaining. In addition to the statute, 81W, public boards can reverse themselves if they feel they've made a mistake in the past. The United States Congress can change their mind. Town councils can change their mind. I was a town councilor in Watertown, Massachusetts. The same form of government is here. We reversed ourselves a couple times in the four years I was there. Town meeting can change their mind. I was a moderator in Westbrookfield, Massachusetts. If the town meeting decides to change their mind, they can. We're asking you to change your mind on something, and let me explain why, okay? Now, what happened here in this case, you know, and admittedly, the passage of time here with this subdivision has caused a problem. The subdivision began in 1990s. The subdivision has 70 lots, 73 lots, 70 of which are in Amherst. The developer, Tofino Associates, purchased all of this land, all of the 73 lots, out of bankruptcy court. And I found the deed. They purchased the entire 73 lots for $425,000 in 1996, okay? Tofino Associates is the developer. A gentleman named Ted Parker is the agent of Tofino Associates. Right now, there are three streets in Amherst Hills: Hawthorne Road, Linden Ridge Road, and Concord Way. All of those roads right now are not finished. They're not fully constructed. They only have a base layer of asphalt on the road, okay? So there's only a base layer. And as you know, and for the benefit of those at home in the audience, when a road is fully constructed, it has a base layer of asphalt and then a top layer of asphalt, okay? These roads do not have, none of the roads have a top layer of asphalt. The town has an unwritten policy, and I've discussed this with Ms. Bestrop, the town has an unwritten policy that they don't want the top layer of asphalt to be laid on top of the road until the subdivision is complete, okay? Now, that has caused a problem in this subdivision, okay, for reasons I will explain. So basically, what happened is this. In 2005, my family and I moved into this neighborhood, okay? Now, there are about 42 families that live in there, 42 occupied houses since 2005. When we purchased the houses and the lots, we became, technically, we became part of an association, the Amherst Hills Homeowners Association. But that homeowners' association has never met, we have never paid dues, and we are not functioning, okay? The developer, Tofino Associates, has acted as the homeowners' association. They have filled every pothole, cut every blade of grass, and maintained every common area. In fact, the association that doesn't exist, as late as July of this past year, approved a shed in one of my neighbor's properties, approved it. That's technically a job the homeowners' association would do, but we don't exist, okay? On August 2nd, 2017, if you just give me a moment here, on August 2nd, 2017, Tofino entered a three-party agreement with the town of Amherst, Tofino Associates, and Greenfield Savings Bank, okay? And they entered into that agreement, and they made certain obligations to the town. And I have copies of this. I will give this to you if you want--
I think you mean May, 2017?
Oh, well--
Because that's when it came to us.
Yeah, okay. Well, the document I have is dated August 2nd, 2017, okay?
That's, excuse me, that's the date of the three-party agreement. When, May 1st, you were given the certificate of performance. But prior to that, I have a copy here if you'd like to see it. I can pass it along.
You're referring to the--
Just because it came to planning board on May 3rd, 2017.
Came a few times.
Well, what I think happened, Madam Chairwoman, it came to you in May 2017, and then you agreed with their plan to enter into a third, three-party agreement.
Right.
And by the time they did the paperwork with Greenfield Savings Bank, the document that I have here is dated August 2nd, 2017.
Right. But did it come back to us again?
I do not have the sequence of events here, but it came several times, and it was finally signed.
We took a vote on May 3rd.
And then when was it signed? So it took a while to get it signed. So you may have taken the vote on May 3rd, and then--
Madam Chairwoman, I have a copy--
By the time everybody signed it, it was--
But did we sign it on this?
No, no.
Mr. Schreiber signed for the planning board.
Oh, Mr. Sch-- I'm just trying to establish the timeline. Hold on a minute.
Do you need the document? Because I have it.
I think we have it.
We have it here.
So we're talking about the performance secured by lenders agreement. That's its name.
Correct.
That's the third-party agreement.
Correct.
It came back to us for this.
Correct. It was referred to me as a third-party agreement, but I guess that is the official title.
Talking to the record.
Oh, yeah, you're right. That's right.
Okay, so then, so it came to us in May of 2017, and then the agreement happened.
In August.
And then the chair at the time, Stephen Schreiber, signed it, what appears-- Oh, this gets even more complicated.
His data is on there.
Okay, so it was, it looks like August 2017. So it didn't come back to us, just Steve must have come in and signed it after it was done deal. So just to step, so it came to us in May, and then the agreement was entered.
Mm-hmm.
And then, okay, keep going.
Okay, great. So in that agreement, the applicant, which is Tofino, the applicant's obligations, paragraph 2.1 on the first page, okay? Complete all infrastructure, construction, and paving on the remainder of Linden Ridge Road. That has not been done. Place final top coat of asphalt on Hawthorne Road and Concord Way in their entirety and on Linden Ridge Road. And there's some map locations. I'm not a map reader, but it says it's in its entirety. And then on paragraph 2.4 on the next page, construction and monitoring to be completed by June 30th, 2019. None of those things have been done.
You said completed by when? June 30th?
On the second page.
By--
June 30th, 2019. 2019, three months ago.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to get a timeline, okay?
And that's on page two of that agreement in your hand, paragraph 2.4. None of those things have been done.
And Chris, it's my understanding that there was like a punch list from the town engineer included in that of his items. There were small items and then, yeah.
For this or for now?
Back in May, during this process in 2017, yeah.
So there've been two punch lists, and one, I understand--
A new one, yeah.
Was recently done.
Yeah.
And it was for everything, repairing the road and then putting the top coat on and just doing everything.
From last month.
That's right, from September of 2019. There was a previous list, punch list, that was done, I believe it was in 2013, and that punch list had a cost estimate attached to it?
Now, so the town engineer told me today that there was a punch list that was created during this timeframe to define what was going to have, what was the expectations to be done by the contractor.
That is correct. And I have it in, I have it somewhere in my file here. If you would like me to find that and give it to you for next time, I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, that would be, yeah. It's just, we want to get an accurate timeline and what all the expectations and different parties who were-- So the town engineer, his thing was that he created a list back in 2017, and then, Because that's when the amount of money in the agreement was being determined. And I think he even had a cost estimate made, the town engineer, that was a higher that included the final, final layer of the payment. So, yeah, that would be helpful. Yes.
My understanding that is that the original cost estimate and list that the town engineer prepared was really to finish the road, not so much as to repair it? And it has deteriorated since he--
He made it pretty clear today that the punch list you gave us in our packet that is dated like September 26th from last month, he said about almost half of this list was created from his 2017 list. And as he described it, it was a lot of small nitpicky things. And then the large thing was the whole, when, when do you put that final top coat on? And there were negotiations with other staff members at the time on what to determine. So the town engineer, he had his punch list, and he had made a cost estimate about the final coat, but he was leaving it to town hall to determine what actually was written up for the agreement of expectations for Tofino.
I think it might be worthwhile for you to invite the town engineer to come and testify to you.
I think so. All right, so--
Can I continue here?
So your issues, so this is the other thing. So you're asking us, so then it continued, and then it came back to us in May of this year of 2019, and they were asking for the release of 13 lots. So if I go to the minutes of what happened, what transpired on May 1st, 2019 here, and I, so it says, "Old business," this is the minutes that I'm reading from, from that night, "Sub 1989-13, Amherst Hills, Tofino Associates Request to Release of Lots." Ms. Bestrop-- Ms. Bester explained, "Tofino Associates is requesting a release from covenant contract for lots 1, 2, 5, 6, 7, 8, 19, 20, 21, 22, 29, 39, and 41. Lot 29 was previously released, however, Tofino Associates is unable to locate the copy of the release and is requesting the board to release it again. The board reviewed a tri-party agreement between Tofino Associates LLC, Greenfield Savings Bank, and the town of Amherst. The agreement is a guarantee that Greenfield Savings Bank will provide a sum of $288,995.30 to finish the roadway work for Amherst Hill subdivision, with the exception of the last cul-de-sac. The board noted that the estimate for the roadwork developed by the town engineer in May 2017 is now two years old."
Two years old.
I don't remember if we actually, I don't think we saw a punch list, I don't think we knew that existed. So then, we made a motion and passed, and it was 700 to approve. That's all that's in the minutes. I don't know if you want to add anything, Chris? I assume we would have asked, you know, is there any else, you know? And there was no timeframe.
So, we'd been talking to the town engineer about this process since 2013, and they knew that you were going to be considering the release on the night of May 1st, but we didn't directly ask them, "Do you recommend that the Planning Board release the lots?"
Yeah.
Didn't directly ask them that question.
The town engineer said he didn't even know that it came to us in May.
And I think that's an important point, and I'd like, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Madam Chairman, but I'd like to give you the background, as I have personal knowledge of, and one other, one of my neighbors does too, leading up to that May vote. And if I may, could I continue, or...
Yes, please.
All right. So in December, December 2018, December 18th, this has nothing to do with the planning board.
Okay.
So I know you're gonna get the timeline there, but it has nothing to do with you.
Yeah, okay.
I went to a public meeting that has nothing to do with this issue, and I ran into Mr. Mooring, and I know Mr. Mooring, we, not friendly, but we recognize each other. And he looked at me and he said, "Hey, Jim, how you doing?" And I said, "Good, fine, Guilford, how are you?" He goes, "Hey, just telling you, I'm not paving your road anymore. I'm not paving your road anymore, that road is terrible."
You mean plowing.
Plowing, what did I say, pave?
Paving.
I'm sorry.
Because he's not gonna pave your road.
I'm sorry, that's not a good mistake. That is not a good mistake. I'm not plowing your road anymore. That road, those roads are terrible. In fact, those roads need to be reconstructed, okay? And at that meeting, he said the same thing to my neighbor, Michelle Spurko, who is not here this evening, she couldn't make it, she's a physician, she couldn't be tonight. And I said to him, you know, I had a good relationship with Mr. Parker, I said, "Have you talked to Ted about this?" And he said, "Well, we're just not getting anywhere with him." I said, "Look, I talked to the guy, I'll call him." So I called him that next day, and I spoke to him that week, and I said, "Ted, they want you to fix the potholes in the road? There are enormous potholes in our street right now, enormous, okay?" And I said to him, "The town DPW director says this road needs to be reconstructed." And he said to me, he goes, "Jim, if the town needs this road to be reconstructed, we'll end up in court." He didn't mean me and him, because I'm just calling him to say there are potholes, he meant, he meant Tofino and the town. So that's in December. So I, and the town continued to plow this road. The town has been plowing this road since at least 2005, when I moved in, okay?
As a courtesy.
As a courtesy, and I know it's a courtesy, but it's a courtesy, and we have 42 people living there, and it's a underdeveloped subdivision, and he's doing it as a courtesy, and we appreciate that very much. So through up the winter, town kept plowing, and I kept calling Mr. Parker, "What's up with the potholes? What's the plan? Are you gonna fix the road?" And I talked to him every once in a while, but it really, really, I really didn't get consistent communication from him. And he knew in December, and through the winter, and into the spring, March, April, May, I called him at least twice a month, he knew in March and April that the roads were in tough shape, and the town's opinion was, because I know he, he said he was gonna call Jason, the town engineer, that Mr. Mooring said the roads needed to be reconstructed. He comes to you in May and asks that the lots be released for sale, okay? I, we never, none of us, I've checked, none of us got notice of that meeting. We had no idea that the lots were being released. May 1, the lots are released. I continued to call him, and I say, "Ted, what's the plan for the roads now? It's summertime, are you gonna fill them? What's happening?" I spoke to him a couple times, he said that he would get to it, you know, to be fair to him, he did have some health problems in May, so I gave him a little break in time. But I spoke to him in June, July, August. We, it got so, we got so annoyed at this that we had a community meeting, all of us, September 6th, and we invited Mr. Parker, and to his credit, he attended. And my question to him was, I, with Mr. Kennedy, my neighbor here, we moderated the meeting, and I said to him, "I'm gonna pose to you two questions, Ted, to put a framework around this discussion. What is Tofino's short-term plan to fix the potholes in the road so the town can continue to plow? And what is the long-term plan to fix the road, the base coat of the road, so the road will be offered to the town, okay? And the reason why we're all here en masse this evening, because Mr. Parker proceeded to tell us that the base coat of the road was now our collective responsibility, that because of the association that does not exist, does not exist to this day, we were responsible for maintaining the base coat of the road. And then, he went on to say, "After you maintain the base coat of the road, I will then lay the top layer of asphalt on the road." Now, we were very calm, because it wasn't, we were very professional with him. We proceeded to tell him, "That's not maintenance, you're asking us to reconstruct the road. The road that we all know is half-built in the first place, okay? It's never been a completed road, okay?" So here we are, and after the lots were released in May, when you released the, I mentioned earlier that he sold four lots, okay? Sold four lots. He realized $560 worth of income from the sale of those four lots in June and July. And then, two months later, he says to us, "You're responsible for maintaining the road and fixing the road, so I can then plow." That's not the way to run a subdivision, that's not a right way to run a railroad, that is just not the way to do business here. All of us were told, when we moved in, that these roads were gonna be prepared and offered to the town for acceptance. Now, I know this from my practice, cities and towns have the discretion whether to accept roads or not. They might decide, I don't think they will with this road, but they, they may not accept it. If Tofino finished the road 100% and completed all their responsibilities and passed it over to the town, and the town said no, then it would be our responsibility to say, "Okay, you did all of your responsibilities, the town said no, they have the discretion, now we have to take up a collection and do our thing." But that's not what, what is happening here. And I just want to hit on two points. There's a covenant, approval of a covenant at Book 755, page 61, and this is referenced in the, your Certificate of Performance, okay? And it's referenced in the Performance Security Agreement, which I'm calling the three-party agreement. Paragraph 1, and I have copies for everybody here, but I'll read this now. "The undersigned," that means Tofino, and Doug Cole, the late Doug Cole, and if Doug Cole was alive, this wouldn't be happening here today. "The undersigned will not sell any lots in the subdivision or erect or place any permanent buildings on any such lot until the work on the ground necessary to serve adequately such lots has been completed in the manner specified in the aforementioned application in accordance with the covenants and conditions," and it's referencing a plan. So it's basically saying here, "All the work on the ground has to be completed." In your, in your Certificate of Performance that you signed on May 1st, your board, and I think, my opinion is, you made a mistake, you didn't know all the facts, you're certifying that all this work has been done. On September 26th, your town engineer toured our neighborhood, and this is the list of all the work that has not been done, and it is not trivial. Half of Hawthorne Road, half of it, if you've ever been out there, I am, half the road downhill, has to be dug up, the asphalt has to be excavated, the road has to be re-engineered, and that has to be done. And Ms. Tofino Associates is saying that we should be responsible for that construction, we are not a construction company. I'm gonna calm down here. We are not a construction company. About 500 feet of Linden Ridge Road has to be reconstructed, and a significant portion of Concord Way has to be reconstructed, reconstructed, in addition to all the other things. And if you walk around the road, I'll just tell you, there's a fire hydrant, and then the, the valve for the fire hydrant was across the street. That valve was underground, the engineer had to dig up the valve, okay? So there is lack of attention from the developer in this subdivision. With all due respect, your Certificate of Performance saying that the work has been done in that subdivision, which has to comply with the covenant, is false. And this document from your engineer proves that it's false. So, with all that said, the passage of time has hurt this subdivision for everyone, the people that are in charge in reviewing it, maybe us as well, we, this has been going on since 2005, but what needs to be done here is, Tofino Associates is getting the benefit of the bargain. They've released the lots for sale and realized $560,000, and they're passing the cost on to us. In my opinion, reversing yourself on this approval of the lots will allow the town to reassert their jurisdiction in this matter, as a Planning Board, reassert their oversight of the work and the obligations here. None of us have obligations to build roads. Not, not a man or woman in this audience has an obligation to fix a road, but Tofino Associates does. They bought the, this is somewhat quasi irrelevant, but it's, it's not. They bought it for $425,000, okay? With just the sale of four lots, they made their money back in May and June of this year. We need your help. This is wrong. I don't want to get tied up in court for 10 years on this project, and you know why I don't want to do that? Because boards like you exist to help the people and make sure that this stuff doesn't happen, that people have a great opportunity to make money on lots and real estate and do it right. But people like us, we're, we live in that neighborhood because we all have good jobs, and we're lucky, and we work hard, okay? I don't need to be a developer. Now, we need your help, and I think if you look at the timeline and look what's happened here, the, Mr. Parker's gonna say, "At any time in our papers, we could say you're gonna take over the road." Really? Right after the release of lots? You're gonna make us responsible for this? They certainly didn't tell you, excuse me for pointing, they certainly didn't tell you in May of this year, "Hey, release these lots, because then we're gonna pass the bill off to these good people." So, Madam Chairman, that's why I'm here. You're, I'm not gonna speak for your town council, but if you didn't know what I just told you when you took this vote in May, if you didn't know it, please reverse yourself, because people make mistakes, and I think this is a mistake.
So, thank you. I'm sorry to hear that. I'm very sympathetic, I understand, unfortunately, this happens way too often with, with these building situations, but I just, before I open it to the board, I just want you to clarify how you see it would benefit you or play out if we were to reverse and say, because all we did in May was release 13 lots, four have been sold, we take back nine, I mean, it is a punishment to him, but there's, I don't see how that will fix your problem necessarily.
Okay.
If you follow what I'm saying.
I do follow. This is, this is, I believe, the answer to your question. The covenant, okay, which is, you know, we all, there are covenants to these subdivisions. The covenant says, "No lots." Instead, if you read through this, there was no performance bond issued on this subdivision, okay? The only performance bond was the $288,000 in the August 2nd, 2017 document. So that's very small. And in this document, when you read through, read through, it says, um, let me just get it. "Now therefore, the agreement witnessed in consideration of the Amherst Planning Board approving said plan without requiring a performance bond." Okay? Then it goes on to say, the, well, I read this to you before, "The undersigned will not sell any lot in the subdivision or place any permanent building on such lot until the work on the ground necessary to sever adequately such lot has been completed." So what happened back there? They were giving him a break, they said, "We're not gonna do a performance bond, but before we release the lots for sale for you, we have to prove that all the stuff you had to do in building this road is completed." So now we know from the town engineer's punch list that he did two weeks ago, right, that none of these things were actually done. So to answer your question, if you reverse yourself on the lots, now he can't sell the lots, which I don't want to do, I don't want to make people not make money, okay? But if you reverse yourself on the lots, now you have the ability to have administrative oversight to him and say to him, "Okay, we took back the lots, you've got all this work to do, it's your obligation, it's not their obligation, you're the developer, you've been coming before us, when, how, when and how are you gonna do this work? And if you have a problem, tell us, and maybe you should require a performance bond."
So, when was that covenant signed?
Oh, well, this, this goes back.
Yeah, that's, so, okay.
But it's still valid. You know why it's still valid?
I'm sure it is.
Because you referenced it in the Certificate of Performance. I got this document because I looked at the Certificate of Performance, and I found this document.
Right, so, I'm just playing out Planning Board, because there's a lot of different factors going on here. If you, if we took those nine back, you're just hoping that that will force him into fixing the road and taking back his statement of saying, "You all need to do, fix the base."
Well, put it this way, the work needs to be done.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And, you know, I believe we're on very solid ground that it's not our responsibility to do it. However, one way or the other, the work needs to be done. And if the work is done, the roads can be paved and it can be offered to the town. Now, as far as who's gonna pay it, I feel very confident that we will prevail in that. But understand this, please, this, this subdivision, Mr. Parker did not make the argument that we are responsible to pay for this subdivision until you released the lots in May, because I doubt he would have done it, told us that we were responsible for this before you released it. Because now, after you released it, the Planning Board's out of the picture. No leverage. All the lots are released, with the exception of some lots that are so, they're like wilderness, they're not gonna be done for a long time. So my view is, this was almost, I don't wanna say a plan, but he couldn't have given us that information until the lots were released. Because, again, he's not gonna tell the Planning Board, "Well, you know, please release these lots, because my neighbors, you know, the citizens are gonna pay for it."
Thank you. I'm gonna ask the board if they have any questions. It's a lot to take in. Chris, do you have anything to add?
I wanted to point out that we did reach out to our town attorney, and we received a response today, and you all have copies of it. He gave us a very lengthy email in response, essentially saying that it is within your rights to rescind the release of the lots, but he cautioned that you do it very carefully. And there, he provided an alternative as well, which is to vote to, vote to recommend that the building commissioner not issue any building permits on these lots. So what we would like to propose, staff, town staff, is that we take time to consider what the town attorney has told us, and talk about it with the building commissioner and with the town manager, and figure out what is the best course of action. But it sounds like you would be within your rights to do what is being asked of you by Mr. Master Alexis. So you could take this up at your next meeting on November 6th, if you choose to.
Would that be acceptable to the board? We'll get more information, the town will investigate. Michael?
I have a question. Do you know whether the four lots that have been sold have had building permits issued, and whether construction has started on houses on those lots?
I don't know the answer to that question, but I can tell you that the purchaser of those four lots is supportive of us.
Is one person purchased all the lots?
It's a builder, I believe.
One person bought all four lots, and he's supportive of our position.
It wasn't a person, it was a, it's a house builder.
Right, it's a contractor.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's, and you know, um, Madam Chairwoman, could I comment on Ms. Brestrop's suggestion?
Uh, the second one, the no building permits?
No, 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 just in general, takes some time to figure out and talk to the town engineer.
Yeah.
You know, I'll be frank. We've got a developer that could sell all these lots tomorrow, okay? Then, then we would be, and the lots have to be sold in good faith. If they're not sold in good faith, a, a bad faith sale, in other words, he knows we're here, he tries to sell them, we could still argue that the lots would be rescinded. I would argue, okay, if you think you made a mistake, okay? You know, people have had too much time to think about this, okay? If you think you made a mistake and you think what I'm saying is ringing true, I would ask that you rescind the lots tonight, rescind the release of the lots tonight. Then, then we're back to status quo. Then we're back to the beginning, okay? That decision, in my opinion, prejudiced us. If you relea- reverse yourself and go back to May 1, then everything's as it was and the planning staff and whoever can make their decisions and then we can come back here again and you can re-release those lots, okay? So I think we've got a roomful of 35-plus people here. As you can tell, I have thought long and hard about this case. I don't think there's any prejudice here to reversing yourself this evening, putting a freeze on this subdivision. Then the planning staff can decide what they wanna do and whatever they choose, then you can unfreeze it. If you so choose, you could release the lots again. But I would ask that you fix your mistake.
So I'm gonna open it to the board. We did get this email this afternoon from the director of planning, from KP Law, the town law advisor. And I have skimmed it lightly at best. And there's some yeses and nos and maybes in here. Um, so I'm a little uncomfortable because to admit a mistake of any type, even if it was that we weren't provided with the right information, we have to be sure legally that, I, I, this is my comfort. We have two lawyers on the board here. I don't know if they have any feelings on this, but um, you know, it would be a three-week wait, but I feel, I feel we need some more information of what happened and this isn't your part, the internal part, like why it went down the way it did. Does anyone else have any other thoughts on that or advice? Janet, yeah?
So, um, the letter from, or the memo from Attorney Bard says that no action should be taken until proper notice has been given to the developer and other affected parties, which I am assuming is probably Greenfield Bank. And so I think that we need to find facts, you know, listen to the town engineer, make sure that um, not just Ted Parker, but Tofino LLC has noticed that we're having a hearing about this. So I think that's the next step.
You, you can't, sir, I will open it up to public comment after we get through this part.
You know, so I think in our next hearings, next meetings in two weeks, we could wait two weeks, three weeks?
Yeah, cause it's the end of the month.
First Wednesday of the month.
Okay, so we have an extra Wednesday somehow. Okay, and so, but I think, I mean, this looks like a situation that might resolve before we do anything. I also am interested if we could ask the town attorney about the, let me give it its proper name. The performance secured by lenders agreement, the effect of that. There's a, it's a guarantee that the performance would take place by June, uh, June 30th, 2019. It didn't take place according to what's being said here. And so it could be enforced ad agreement. And I think Greenfield Bank would be part of that if, too.
If I may, Madam Chairwoman, to you, Ms. McGowan. The amount of that agreement is $288,000. That's real short. It's real short. It's, it's, that's not gonna fix what we've got going on here. It's just not.
I would also feel better with reversing a decision if I knew how it was gonna more solidly play out, which is critical for other parts of the town to, like, let's just bring up this one. Like, so the town plows is a courtesy, very nice.
Yep.
And let's say, actually, what I heard, they have potholes, but also probably due to settling. I, I believe Hawthorne got the base coat back in like 2000, 2004, 2005.
Yeah, right.
So like, you know, 15 years of base coat.
Right.
I'm a civil engineer too, so like, I know asphalt, unfortunately. So, um, if, if, it's also because probably of settlement or something, or maybe they were set a hair too high, but the manholes are a little high, probably a quarter to a half inch, which doesn't sound like much, but
It's a lot to a plow.
The town engineer said that when they had a plow going through last year, which is probably what made Mr. Mooreing a little cranky, it broke, sheared a pin and so it broke the plow and they had to have it fixed. So let's just say that they say this winter, we're not plowing. Well, isn't it Tofino's responsibility then? Like, so what happened? So there's other aspects, I wanna know what happens if it plays out.
Well.
If, you know, so what happens to you all? Are you gonna have to hire plows or is he?
Someone's got to, someone has to.
But what controls will the town have on that or the decisions they make? What will?
Well.
There's more than just this, there's other players.
You should, you should ask your town engineer.
Yeah.
Because your town engineer sent me and, cause I've basically been leading the neighborhood here, sent me and Ted Parker an email saying, here's the work that needs to be done in order for us to plow. And the total on that, I believe, was $16,000, okay? And sent it to me and he sent it to Ted. I think he was just trying to be straight up about it, like this is what needs to be done.
I agree.
And everything from, from when I moved in in 05 to this year, Tofino's always filled the pot, they always talked to Jason, they always fill it.
You say that in your statement.
Right. From, so we're like a month maybe, it was 34 degrees this morning when I woke up, okay? We're like maybe a month of maybe of available paving, paving and filling pothole time, if you will.
Right, or the plants close.
So our time, right, the plants close. So our time is short. Our time is short for the pay, uh, plowing of snow and the fixing of the holes. So I, I, I guess I need to say, say whatever you do, time is short for us, okay? And, you know, and I wanna, you know, Tofino told us September 6th, hey, it's your responsibility. That's, that's like a little more than a month ago.
Was that only verbal or did he write that?
No, it's verbal.
No letters?
Verbal, we were, how, we, how many people were at that meeting, September 6th?
If you're gonna speak, um, no, um, I'll open it up to public, but you can speak what he's saying, yeah.
So I'm not, I, that's what he said.
Okay.
So I'm done, if you want other people to speak.
Chris?
I wanted to ask Mr. Max, Master Alexis if he would send me a copy of the town engineer's email in which he said that it would be $16,000 to prepare the road enough to plow it. I think that's good information for us to have.
That is excellent, yeah.
And I will, but I have the bill or the estimate for that work tonight. I can give you that copy when I clear up my paperwork and give that to you, but I will send you the transmittal email.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna, the board, yep.
Mr. Master Alexis, so it's kind of a legal question. To what extent is the so-called homeowners association referenced in your deeds?
Well, there is, they're, they're referenced and attached to our deeds, okay? And there's a homeowners and association and restrictions, okay? And the homeowners association says rightly so that the homeowners and homeowners association will be responsible for maintenance. Maintenance, cut the grass, do things like that that normal homeowners associations do. So if Mr. Parker said to us at that meeting, it's time for you to cut the grass, we would've said, okay, that's a normal thing that a homeowners association did. So they are, excuse me, they are referenced in our deeds, okay? But it doesn't say that we need to reconstruct roads, okay? There is, if you read the document in total, okay? If we decided to be a private neighborhood, which we're not, and like a gated community like private, which we are not, then we could decide as a homeowners association to construct things if we wanted to. We could construct a gate or a road if we wanted to. But there is the word construction in there. But if you read, it also says in there, the developer fully expects to turn these roads over to the town. So you, if you look at the whole scheme, the bylaws were meant after Tofino fulfilled all his responsibilities under the covenant and your subdivision rules and regulations for constructing the road and laying the top asphalt on. When they finish their obligations, after that, if the town didn't take it over, then we would be responsible if something happened, if we continued to be a private road. Because I'll tell you right now, none of us, none of us would have bought our home if Mr. Parker's reading of those bylaws was accurate. At any time he could say to us, you're responsible to construct the road, none of us would buy. Who would buy that, okay? And please remember, and I, I'm, I'm a little off your question. You, you released the lots, he sold $560,000 worth of lots in May, uh, July, in, uh, June and July, and then two months later, it's on us. Did I answer your question, sir?
I think I saw, and then, and did you have something?
I will.
Okay.
On that note, I, I'm not familiar with subdivision completion times, but you had mentioned there was an unwritten thing about how there's no top coat until the subdivision is complete.
Yep.
Has that, I mean, it's, it's still under construction, like where would, when would that have happened?
Well, let me say this, that is, and I'd like to refer this question to Ms. Brestrop. Okay, and maybe Ms. Brestrop could explain this with, Ms. Brestrop. I mean, am I basically stating an accurate fact here that the town has an unwritten rule not to lay the top coat of asphalt on a subdivision until the subdivision is complete?
Do we have guidelines and who makes that determination?
Well, I said unwritten, it's unwritten, is it unwritten?
Right, but I'm asking her if we have any in-house guidelines and who makes that decision.
Um, we do not have anything written down as far as I know. Um, the decision is generally made when the subdivision is complete. The reason that the town doesn't want the top coat to go on ahead of time is because there's so much heavy equipment that goes over the roads during construction of houses. So in a normal subdivision, it's usually built within a few years. In this case, it's dragged on for a very long time, an unexpected amount of time. And realistically, the top coat should have been put on a few years ago probably. And I believe the town engineer would probably go along with that. But generally speaking, the policy is not to put the top coat down until the construction is finished.
And in other subdivisions, looking back at previous examples in town, is that 100% of the lots are sold, 100% of the lots are built? Or it was like 80%? Like, is there any, and you may not know.
So I don't really know because there haven't been that many subdivisions built in the last few years. I do know that there are problems with Paley Village. Um, the road there is not complete and the town hasn't taken it over. And there are problems with Hopbrook and Kestrel Lane, which is also a Tofino property. So, um, those residents have been arguing the same argument. Other than that, I'm not aware of any other subdivision that doesn't have completed roads.
I believe Tofino owns South Market Street, the, the, near Atkins, the really high hill.
That's South Middle Street, South Middle Street.
South Meadow.
It's on the other side of Bay Road.
It's a South Middle Street entity that's building the tall lot, tall, I say tall, but houses on the hill near Atkins, off Bay Road. Um, but they're having, they're, the development there as well.
Janet, or Chris, then Janet.
I just wanted to point out that generally speaking, we do ask the town engineer for his opinion when we receive a lot release request. And we did receive lot release requests in 2013 and three times in 2017. And the answer was that the road was constructed well enough to allow the construction of this new house or these new houses. So he wasn't saying that it's a perfect road, he wasn't saying that it's a good base course. He was just saying that it was constructed well enough to serve the construction of the new house.
Thank you. Janet? He says he'll go after you.
I just, I'm wondering about, um, Tofino is a New Jersey LLC and is Mr. Parker the registered agent for Tofino for the state of Massachusetts? Or what is, what is his role? I mean, I thought he was the president of Cole Construction. But is that, are they doing business under a different name? I'm just kinda wondering, who knows? Like if the owners of the LLC, Tofino, know what's going on?
I know, I know. He, Ted Parker is the registered agent. Benedict Cole is the president of, of Tofino Associates LLC. So Mr. Parker is the resident agent.
And do you know, does, do you know if Mr. Cole, Benedict Cole, knows what's going on here?
I have had no contact with Mr. Cole. Who's Doug's father.
Is that Doug's father?
It's Doug's father. I've had no contact with the gentleman.
David?
Well, thank you for your presentation and the amount of work that you've done and the support that you clearly have with your neighbors here. And you've, I think, raised serious concerns that, I don't, just speaking for myself, but that, that, that are, that I'm sympathetic with and, and that are cause for concern. And I understand your clear request to, to rescind the release of the nine remaining unsold lots. My concern is this, and it was evident in your presentation, is evident to me as I was reviewing the materials today, was that this is, this is a significant issue that for you all, for the developer, and I think for the town, and that we received this afternoon from Mr. Bard, the town, a town attorney, a dense, um, opinion that I think warrants careful deliberate consideration. And that, um, and that there are a number of other players in this or interested parties in this, including some, some town staff, including Tofino Associates. And that not, and recognizing that there is, there are, is a time factor. However, the, the, the concerns raised by the attorney's memo today that we've really had very little time to process and, and I don't know where, how, where it circulated within Town Hall, that, that there are considerations to weigh there as well and how best to proceed. You've raised serious issues about, about the, the decision that was made in May. And there are serious issues facing you, public safety ones among, not least of which, but, um, and so, but, but that's where I'm trying to figure out how to sort of navigate these different, these various concerns. And, and the course of, the, the suggest, suggestions in the memo that, from the attorney that were made, but still were made with, that were cautionary, were, were perhaps it's unsettled law, it's not clear about the, the status of a rescission of such a decision. But that, but, you know, he guardedly said that, 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 that's a potential course of action. But also a potential course of action could be to recommend to the town inspector not to issue any, what is, inspector, a certificate of occupancy, is that it?
Building permits.
Building permits until this is also resolved.
Okay.
Okay? And because, because of the, the litigation postures that this is adopting, that you've referenced as well. I think that real, my concern is to be very careful and on behalf of the town and its resources as well, and to chart this course carefully. And so that's why I, I think, I mean, in one way to distill your point, and I think there's strong credibility to it, is that, that the board in May made a premature decision without sufficient fact finding. And to reverse that, I think it's clear there's still some fact finding as well as in consideration for, by, by others in the town about what the risks are and where, and, and what's the best course to take. And that's, so that's where, that's where, that's where I'm at, I think, is that you're reminding us that we should do this deliberately, carefully. And that's what I'd like to do.
Okay.
And so my proposal, okay, would be actually to continue this, to clearly notify the part, other parties, Tofino Associates and Mr. Parker to, I know that, that you're, this is not gonna be, this'll be frustrating, but to ask is not going to be, this will be frustrating, but to ask patients, um, for the, the continued hearing, and that in the interim, that we recommend to the, the building inspector not to issue any building permits for any of these lots until, until this is, and, and until, until we're able to sort of better understand and, and have a better course of action to, to undertake. That would be my suggestion.
Would that building permit through you, Ms., Madam Chairman, I'm sorry, would that building permit, moratorium, so to speak, start now? When would that start?
It's not in our jurisdiction to make that.
Is it a suggestion that you're making to the building department?
Uh, no, 'cause that's part of the KP law. He gave us many options.
I haven't seen it.
Yeah. I haven't even, you know, I zoomed through it. He, you know how lawyer speak is, is all these cases?
It's great, isn't it? It's great. Lawyer speak is great.
Anyways, um, it, it was one of the options he gave in there, is, is we proceed carefully, but maybe, and blah, 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 blah. Um, so, um, we have to digest that. I wanted to ask, Chris, could we do, um, a site visit for this with Jason Skiles? 'Cause we have this punch list, which, even I don't know what some of the things are. Um, but I think it would be helpful for us in our deliberating and figuring out what to do. We should look at these roads and, and see what the issues are. Would the board be up for that, etc.? Okay. And Janet?
So, I've actually been on these roads, and I was wondering what was wrong with them and how come they weren't done. So, um, I wonder if we could schedule this hearing for two weeks, and maybe in the next two weeks, the potholes get filled by Tofino, because I know this is coming, and we notify Greenfield Bank, which is probably, you know, has a, has a lot of money on the line, and then contact, you know, the registered agent in Massachusetts, but I would also go directly to the owner. And so, maybe some things can happen in the next two weeks that will help your situation. But I think it is really serious, and I know we're running out of time and we don't know when the winter comes. And so, if you're in a situation where you have a lot of potholes and the town doesn't want to plow, it's all on your shoulders. The other thing I want to say is, I'm not sure what denying a building permit would do, except hurt whoever owns, you know, you know, it's not, it doesn't really hit, I mean...
Well, he hasn't sold the other nine lots, so...
But I'm just, so you're saying that...
They buy a lot and they know they can't build a house until this gets sorted.
And then he can't, he wouldn't be able to sell...
And then a builder bought the other four lots.
And then if he sold a lot knowing that the building permits wouldn't issue, that would be a material fa, piece of information. Okay, so I'm trying to, to me, I was hoping, I was thinking that...
Playing it out.
Denying the permits would hurt whoever had bought the lot and the builder, or the people buying the house.
Only that builder who bought them this summer. But, um, Chris, do you have something to add?
So, one of the things that we need to work out as staff is to determine, um, how do we handle something like that? How would we let, um, potential buyers know that they can't build because the building permit isn't going to be issued? And there's nothing that we would put in the registry, so usually lawyers for a buyer will go to the registry and trace the title and look at all the documents.
Right.
But if we don't have anything in the registry, they're not going to know that. A rescission of the release of lots would be recorded at the registry, so that's a more solid, um, course of action. But these are all things that we haven't had time to think about.
These are pros and cons you have to, yeah.
We got this email at 3:52 this afternoon.
Yeah.
And so, I've read it, and I've spoken with the building commissioner, and you haven't had a chance to absorb it, and we haven't had a chance to have any kind of conversation about what's the best course of action.
Janet?
The people selling property have obligation to get, disclose facts that would influence the buyer, and so I think this information about not having a building permit, or there's a moratorium on it, would be very material. Um, I don't know if they, if Tofino is selling through a Realtor, but those, you know, the real, that could be people who would be informed about this. I'm trying to think about, you know, how it would play out, so.
Well, the other thing too, just on a practical basis, there are, there are six lots, Lot 1, 2, 5, 6, 7, and 8, that are before the Conservation Commission right now, and I don't want to complicate this matter, but the point is, those lots right now need, if they get it, in order of conditions, in order to build. Okay? That has nothing to do with us, it's just a reality, 'cause there's a vernal, probably a vernal pool there. So, we've got Lot 1, I'm just going to count with my fingers here, Lot 1, Lot 2, Lot 5, 6, 7, and 8. So, there's six out of the nine that can't be built upon until the Conservation Commission acts. There are three other lots spread around the neighborhood, one on Hawthorne, two up the road on Linden Ridge. So, really, if you reversed yourself on these lots, the six that are currently under the Conservation Commission, they can't be built on anyways right now. It really would be affecting three. And I, I completely understand what you're saying, sir, and I understand what you're saying. You know, I, I think for three lots, I, I think, I think the, the scale of justice there would weigh in our favor for reversing yourself. This is the last thing I'm going to say, 'cause I know you're uncomfortable with it, and look, honestly, we're the good guys here. I don't want to make any, I don't want to press you to do anything you don't want to do, okay? But we're talking three lots, Ms. Brestrop is exactly right. If you reverse yourself, that'll be recorded in the land registry, and then it's no question. Okay? And the last thing I want to say is, I, look, I was a municipal lawyer for a while, okay? I've written letters like that. But in the end, if you think this is not right, everyone's afraid of getting sued, but if you do the right thing and you think it was wrong in May with the decision that you had without proper information, it just takes a little bit of, yeah, you know, we were wrong, the better thing to do is, let's fix this now. No, I know.
And that sounds very sensible.
Yeah.
Um, but in a way, if we did make a mistake, it was an act in haste, so we wouldn't want to do that twice.
That's fine.
So, we're just going to give this a little time. We totally hear you. If it's okay with the board, I wanted to open it up to public comment.
I'm going to sit down.
There's so many of you, we could be here all night. I just want to first say, and I think the whole board would agree, we are totally sympathetic to the hell that you're going through, and I hope you sense that, and it, we're not trying to like put this off or blow you off or anything like that. We're just asking for three weeks, so the town can properly advise us, get all their Ps and Qs in a line, and we can really sort out, because in a way, I feel even if we quickly reverse this, it really won't definitely guarantee fixing your problem. It's, that's not what's in the debate here. It might help, and, you know, if it happens, I hope it does help, but there might be a grander plan here, and there might be other ways that will provide assistance for you guys getting this all sorted out. Um, so, with that, if you could try to keep it to two minutes, um, we probably won't comment back, we're just listening, um, and try not to be too repetitive. I know sometimes you've waited so long, you really want to get up there and say something, um, but just do the best you can. I'll probably start on this side of the room, and you'll just raise your hand in between, and I'll pick, and I might bring like two up at a time, and, um, make, say who you are and, and where you live, and make sure the green lights are on. And does the board have anything to add?
Before I leave, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. So, first off, I'm going to ask a show of hands, how many people would like to speak? Not as bad as I feared. So, we'll start on this side of the room. Um, since there was so few, if, if you feel like you need to go like for, like, three minutes, that's fine. Um, so, again, there's about, I saw about three hands, sometimes a few more people decide after, like, oh, my comment didn't get said, so we'll work it. So, um, we'll start with you, and, and a show of hands again, and, all right, you'll be second, third, fourth, and that, and then fifth, all right? And then I'll ask again after that. Please come forward, sit down, um, no, no, sit, come up to the, you get to come front and center. So, make sure the little green light is on.
You're speaking for the benefit of the people at home.
Yes, this is being videotaped. So, um, yeah, just speak into the mic.
Um, I just want to comment to you, I think, Ms. ...
Your name first.
Okay, my name is Ulrich Holleschowski, AD 7 Linden Ridge Road.
We are taking notes.
Ulrich Holleschowski, H-O-L-E-S-C-H-O-V-S-K-Y, sorry, 12 beautiful letters, messed up, anyway. Yeah, so I just want to say...
And address again? I'm sorry. We're detail oriented here, believe me.
I try not to be too...
Sir, sir, just your address again, I just want...
AD 2 Linden Ridge.
Okay, thank you.
I try not to be too emotional, but I think we were all deceived, I think you were still bored, were deceived, all the homeowners were deceived. You, you, and, uh, this builder clearly has, you know, I struggle to find the correct word, but he's being, uh, I mean, to, to, to tell us that we are responsible to create, uh, prepare a road, dig up a road, that is a matter of maintenance, it is, also, it's really, it's something. So, I think, uh, I think if you were to release, or reverse your decision, at least you would freeze, because I would not put it past them to find a buyer in those, in, in those few days, in the time that will be given until you make your decision. So, I think it would be wise, your own lawyer has that, you within your rights, the case law is there, you are with the right to reverse decision, just to make sure that nothing else, nobody else gets deceived, because I think there may be other victims if, if you let, give it a chance, if it's recorded in the registry that on hold, nobody else can get deceived. That's why I really strongly urge you to consider that your own lawyer has given you clearance to do it, and then if, if you come up after further consideration, you decide, well, we are wrong, and the builder's right, then you can reverse your decision. And it's just, um, it's just nerve wracking for us, 'cause I think, uh, there is, uh, there is at least some leverage that exists to compel the builder to say what they said they would do. Thank you.
Thank you. I think number, yep, second.
Can I, Madam Chair, can I just say one thing? Just say one thing.
You keep saying that.
Uli moved into our neighborhood, Uli moved into our neighborhood.
You gotta say your name again, this is, and then speak, yep.
James Mastrelax is 35...
It's the lawyers that make us be like this.
35 Linden Ridge Road. Uli moved into the neighborhood two years ago, so...
Yeah.
Right? Two years ago? Two years ago. So, two years ago, he bought the house now, bang, you're responsible for building the road. That's not right.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Uh, my name is Scott Siege, S-I-E-G-E.
Yeah, is it the green button on and makes, and it's, yeah, just speak good and I'll...
So, Scott Siege, I live at 12 Hawthorne Road. Um, and, so, my, the reason that I wanted to speak is really a practical one, which is that what I see coming here is that the town has known, my understanding is, is that that comment that we're not going to plow the roads came in December, so, you know, rounding off for an entire year, that my neighborhood would become impassable this winter, because the town is not planning to plow it. If it's not going to plow it because it destroys the plows, I, I don't, I don't know exactly who is going to plow it. So, I'm not going to be able to get to work. I'm a pediatrician, I'm chief of pediatrics at Wing. Um, I need to be able to get to work. Um, my family needs to be able to get out. When there's an emergency, my son was rushed to the emergency room a couple of, of, of years ago. I, I couldn't care for him at home, and I'm chief of pediatrics, okay? Who am I going to call when that happens? Am I going to call you? What, you know, which one of you?
Don't call me.
I am, but you know what? I am going to call you. Um, it's unbelievable, inconceivable, that Amerist would allow, uh, a, a company like Tofino to allow the neighborhood that they control to become impassable. How is my son going to get to school? The buses are not going to run through my neighborhood anymore. How am I going to get him to school? That is inconceivable in 2019 in the United States. You asked for our patience? I don't, what patience do I have to give you? This is going to happen unless we make it, unless we fix it now. Um, and I have a question. You had commented that the, I think it was the, that somebody had, uh, had commented before the release of, of, of lots in previous times, like 2013, 2017. Was there, but you didn't mention a comment from 2019 when they were just released?
I don't have a comment from 2019.
Okay. And my question is, is that an expectation that there be a comment from, it was from the, from the engineer?
Yeah.
So, there was no comment from the town engineer in 2019?
Uh, we asked about it, and we...
I don't really care if you asked about it, if he didn't make a comment.
But there was one from, I'm just clarifying, so you know that, so it, we had one from 2017, and it was commented that it was two years old, that, so, that's where we were at.
Okay, so you didn't have a comment.
Just to clarify.
Do you expect a comment before you make such a decision? Do you expect a comment before you make such a decision?
We go by what we are supplied by the, the town, we're a volunteer board. We don't, yeah.
So, so you don't expect a comment?
So, we were supplied information, and we made a judgment on what we had.
But the information you were supplied is we don't know, 'cause we haven't looked.
Well, we had information from 2017, two years before, and that's not shocking, that happens all the time here, when people get permits, they last for years.
Okay.
We're working on developments, other developments that have been going on for over a decade, so...
And so, what's the plan for the school buses and emergency vehicles?
Well, just to remind you, the plowing is a courtesy. The town doesn't even have to plow your road, so that would be right between you and Tofino.
But that's not even the issue. The issue is that if it's unplowable...
Well, I don't know if it's unplowable, I, I just think it's difficult.
So, the town won't plow it, but private companies will?
And that hasn't, the town hasn't told you, it, there was a conversation, but there has been no document or statement from the town saying they weren't going to plow it this year.
I can clarify that, too.
Okay, yeah.
Jim Mastrelax is 35, Linden Ridge Road. I do have an email from Mr. Jason Skiles, the town engineer, that said, "Jim, this is the work that needs to be done in Amerist Hills in order for the roads to be plowed." And he laid it out, boom, 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 boom. Then he gave a name of a contractor that would do the work, then he gave me a rough estimate of $16,000, and then in one sentence, he said, "Unless the above work is not completed, the town will not plow the road this winter." And I got that email, what's today, Wednesday? I believe I got that email Thursday. So, he gave us, and he sent that email to me and Ted Parker. I'm not the construction person, I'm not the developer. He sent it to Ted, and he sent it to me, so that's...
Thank you, and that's why we need to have, we need to have follow-up conversations with the town engineer to clarify where, you know, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I think number three, yep, and then you, four.
Alexandra Melio, uh, that's M-E-L-I-O-U, I'm at 73 Linden Ridge. We understand, um, we understand that you, uh, made a decision under some false assumptions and without all the information, and, and we get that you're hesitant to, uh, reverse it now. Um, I would like to ask you, sort of a plea to consider the risks, one way or another. We are, a lot of families living in that road, a lot of us in, in that neighborhood, a lot of us with small kids. I have a three and a half year old myself. Uh, we're nervous about being prepared, about emergency vehicles being able to reach our neighborhood, uh, the fire department, the ambulance, there's school buses who pick up kids. Uh, all of us, of course, need to get to work. We would like your help, because as our town government, um, and us as taxpayers, we, we rely on you to protect us from this type of situations, this type of unscrupulous developers who take advantage of us and, and leave us in a situation that we have no choice. Um, I moved into this neighborhood, we built a new house, Ted Parker was our builder. This type of, uh, delay, 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 give false promises until the other party comes, sees themselves in a dead end, and they have no choice, is not new to me, I've seen it before. And I'm very nervous when I'm hearing that we just need to have some more delays, because I worry that this is just working against us, and we are the innocent party in the situation. So, I would like you to just consider, I understand, you see possible risks in reversing this decision tonight, and you want information, I get it. Uh, this decision was made under false pretenses by Ted Parker and Cole, and I think weighing the risks of what this means to us, families, taxpayers, citizens of the town, with a lot of little kids around, I think you should consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Blake Spurko, fifty-three Concord Way. I just had two quick points. One was we met in September with Ted Parker and he said, I'll do the right thing and get the potholes fixed before winter, even when we have an argument. So we even pushed our timeline more as he said, we do the right thing and we have enough people who are at the meeting to be able to state that that's what he said. The other was I met with Ted Parker, Doug Cole, many times building our house around 206. And they said very clearly and told also many of the neighbors that they would prep the roads to the town's specifications with all anticipation that they would take it. In the past, they've always taken in the roads that they've prepped. So this is a complete deviation from what they said and what they, I believe, done in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. I think number five was this woman. And as she comes up, can I have a show of hands of how many people would still like to come up and speak? Raise your hand. I think I saw one. Okay. Two. Okay. So, hold on. And then, great. Say your name and address, please.
Deborah Khan, thirty-two Hawthorne Road, K.A.H.N. I just have a question. It's clear that you're not going to rescind your decision perhaps because of all the legal ramifications, how complicated it is. But given how complicated it is, I'm wondering, is it possible to put some kind of freeze without saying we've made a mistake, without saying we rescind? Some kind of freeze that will put some pressure on Tofino because it's pretty clear that there's no pressure right now. And it's kind of an emergency situation, given school buses, plows, ambulances, things like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, to that, to her or?
Yeah, to the group.
Oh, to, okay.
This morning, did the school buses pick up your kids? Yeah?
Thank you.
Joel Greenbaum, eighty-seven Linden Ridge. This is terrible, what's going on. There's far more than just, you know, plowing. It's a much larger issue. And I'm glad you guys are coming to our neighborhood to do a site visit. I've witnessed, driving down Linden Ridge is like trying to navigate an obstacle course, okay? I've witnessed multiple near-head-on collisions. I've witnessed at least a half a dozen flat tires, dented rims. This neighborhood's filled with children. What you're doing is wrong. You got to put some action tonight and hold Ted accountable. You have to.
Hi, my name is John Kennedy. I'm at thirty-six Linden Ridge Road. This has been a fascinating meeting tonight. We've watched concern about the placement of air conditioner units on University Drive, whether or not trees would screen a solar farm, all really important work that you're doing to protect the citizens of this town. We have a very pressing and urgent matter in our neighborhood. And I understand, you know, you have, I guess, a dual responsibility to look out for the town and its potential liability here. But we are the town. We're the taxpayers. We're the citizens of this town. And we're asking you for help. And the delay is problematic because there is clearly an attempt, I think, by Ted Parker and Ben Cole to run out the clock on us, to back us into a corner where we have no choice but to take on this responsibility of either reconstructing the roads or temporarily fixing the roads for plowing. So I just ask us not to play into that, that timeline. Look, I, we've vetted this case with at least three different attorneys. Jim has done amazing work here. We have a very strong case. I think the exposure from the point of view of the town for liability on this is probably minimal. We need your help to get through this. And then there was, Madam Chairman, you mentioned the issue of whether or not rescinding the decision would be punitive. We don't see it necessarily as punitive, although we don't have a problem with that. But we see it as a way for the town to exercise leverage to get the developer, Ben Cole and Ted Parker, to live up to their obligations. But we also see it as an opportunity for the town to protect future residents. There's at least nine or thirteen more families that will move into this neighborhood and will be subject to this fraud as well if you don't step in and reverse this decision. So again, appreciate the fact that you want to be deliberative about this. Appreciate the, you know, that this is a volunteer board and we're thankful for all that you do for the town. But we're asking you because this is an urgent situation for us. You've heard us all here. We're asking for your help and we're really asking for it tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? I don't see anyone. Michael.
Chris, do the subdivision regulations, which I don't have a copy up in front of me, provide us with any guidance as to the responsibility of the developer and the timeline that that responsibility extends to? In other words, if we don't rescind this decision, is the developer off the hook for any kind of improvements that the subdivision regulations would otherwise require him to provide?
Chris, sorry.
The subdivision regulations require him to finish the road, but I don't believe there's any timeline outlined in the subdivision regs. I can take a look at that and I'd be happy to do that, but I don't think there is.
Janet.
My question for the board and for Chris and the town staff is how much time do you need or do we need to schedule the next hearing? And so we want to hear from the engineer. We want to do a site visit. And we need to give proper notice to the interested parties, which I assume are Greenfield, Tofino. So.
So we have the sixth as our, well, we have a special, we already put a third one in for tomorrow night, which is very rare for, we're having two nights in a row. So we have tomorrow night. But then sometimes on a month like this, we squeeze a third one in, which would be our fourth one for the thirtieth of the month. I don't know if y'all can check your calendars and see if you're available. But then I want to push back to Chris and say, oh, first off, that's a week difference, six, the sixth of the thirtieth. How much time do you think in-house to, to sort this out? Because as the last person said, I mean, it's, it's, we're dealing with this one problem, but for the town, it may trigger things that need to be fixed on a larger scale. Look at other developments or other developments that this developer's working with. Yes?
So we could try for the thirtieth and see how much we can accomplish. There are a lot of other things happening in town, meetings, forums, housing forums, 40R forums, you name it. But we can try for the thirtieth. If that doesn't work out, we can go to the sixth. So.
When is that master plan? That's Monday, right? That would be the twenty-eighth?
That's the twenty-eighth, yeah.
Okay. Janet?
So we don't have like a permit application. So if we put a meeting on the thirtieth and things sort of resolved or potholes were filled or we knew, we could just change that date without meeting and convening and postponing, right? So.
The only thing would be that we're talking about notifying the developer.
Yeah.
And there was some language in the email about exactly what that's called. I forget what the notice is called. But anyway, there, that may have some requirements for a certain amount of time that we have to notify them or put something in the paper. I don't really know what that means. But all things being equal, we could try for the thirtieth. And then if the thirtieth doesn't work out, then we'll go for the sixth.
Then we would try to make a decision on the sixth.
Well, we're not, we're not having a public hearing, are we, for this?
No, but the town attorney recommended that we do some kind of notice. And I don't know what that notice entails. I don't know if there are legalities with regard to that. If there are, it could be two weeks. It could be put some, a notice in the paper. I don't really know what it's all about. So that's something that we need to check. If there are no specific requirements for that, you know, the thirtieth will work. If there are specific requirements, it would have to be the sixth because in order to have a noticed meeting on the sixth, we need to put a legal ad in the paper, send it in by Friday. So I don't really understand.
Oh, that's for the sixth?
All of the pieces and parts involved. But I'm willing to say we could plan for the thirtieth. And if worse comes to worse, we'll go to the sixth. So if that's what you'd like to do, we can do that.
So how about we, is everyone available for the thirtieth?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So how about we just put in, we'll put a meeting on the thirtieth that can always be pulled, but let's hope that what needs to get done is done and whoever needs to come can come. And then if not, we'll slide to the sixth and we'll just take it as that. And the good news is batch plants usually don't close until the middle to late December.
Right. Madam Chairman?
Especially with climate change. It's getting even later.
Madam Chairman, can I just?
Yes.
Jim Mastrelax is thirty-five Linden Ridge Road. I just want to address the gentleman's question here. First of all, I gave, this isn't addressing a question, but I gave Mr. Parker notice of this hearing. I sent him an email. And I got, I got an email this morning from an attorney representing his interests to me. So he knew about this. And I got an email from a lawyer wanting to speak about this matter. So he knew about this, number one. Number two, now addressing your question to Ms. Brester about timelines or whatever. When you voted on May one to release those lots, the language in your certificate that you all signed, it's saying that the planning board certifies, certifies that the work has been completed to the satisfaction of the planning board. Okay? And I think one thing, if, I don't think you need another hearing for, to prove, I believe we proved that this work was not done to your satisfaction. I don't think, I don't want to speak for you, but if you don't think, this actually again circles back to your comment about what the timelines are. If you don't, if you think that statement is inaccurate, in other words, what was done here is not to your satisfaction, then that's not really a false document, but it's a document that's a mistake. I just ask you to correct it.
Thank you. So this is not a hit public, like we don't have to close anything, right?
Right.
All right. So we'll just, we've got the thirtieth and the sixth and.
You can agree by consensus that you want to have this meeting on the thirtieth.
All right. And we'll do our due diligence and the town will advise us and.
So we're going to have another meeting on the thirtieth?
On the thirtieth. If it's, if the town's not ready or there had to be proper announcement, public notice or whatever, it might slide to the sixth. But we're trying for the thirtieth.
Are you going to visit our neighborhood, do a site visit before the thirtieth?
Before the thirtieth, we will do a site visit.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any, Michael?
Yeah. Am I the only one here on the board who's uncomfortable with postponing this decision? I hear a great amount of anxiety and energy coming from the, from the audience, which is more than an audience, the residents of this area. And as I read Joel Bart's document, which I read three times since I got it, it seems to me that we are completely within our rights, even though case law has not, even though the law has not been tested in the courts in quite the way that he would like to have had, happened.
Right.
I believe his statement is that we are within our rights to, without holding any additional public hearings, move to rescind the decision of, whatever that date was, August second, no. May first, sir.
May first, this year.
Yeah. The most recent decision. And I just like to, I don't want to make a motion at this point, I don't think. But if, if no one else is interested in pursuing this tonight, so be it. I am.
There's no, for me, there's no good decision here right now, tonight. There isn't. I agree with you, Michael, that I, and I, you know, we all, I certainly sense your concerns and urgency and strength of that, of that position. However, it does say here, and I know you've done a lot of work, Jim, and you're all attesting to this as well, that the board should review the relevant facts and make factual findings to support whatever decision it should make. It's, 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 it is gray. It's not perfectly clear. And I think that it serves everyone's interest to, to make relevant facts and factual findings, not disputing any of the claims that you've said here, but in order to, to deliberate a more comfortable decision. And so while I'm sympathetic, Michael, about wanting to come to a decision tonight, I don't feel like I can do so comfortably and that we need a little more information and we need to suss out a little bit better what the attorney's saying with the other people who are not in this room tonight, the engineers and, and Mr. Parker, if he comes or doesn't, or his attorney comes or doesn't, you clearly got their attention too. And so I, I just don't feel like, like I can make that decision.
Yeah, I agree. I literally got this email an hour before our five o'clock meeting and I feel like we would be rushing into something. Your concerns are completely valid and we hear you. And it sounds like there was definitely something underhanded going on. But without understanding it fully, I would feel like we were rushing into a decision that could have major implications. So, but I really appreciate your time coming out and showing your passion and thought behind all of this.
Madam Chairman, could I help you with any gray areas?
No.
Ask me a gray question. I know this case upside down about.
So I also have to agree with both of them. I'm not comfortable tonight because as I stated earlier, even if we back off and change our decision, it doesn't solve your problem. All it does is maybe put a little more ouch on his, like trying to leverage him to do the right thing, but it doesn't make him do the right thing. So I think for us to do our due diligence and find the legality and the best solution, we would just be, I mean, I hear you, you're, you're smart, you've researched this, but you are one side of the coin. And we are a board that has to listen to everybody and get advice from the town. And we're not even sure what went wrong here. So how can we, like, if we did make a mistake, I want to be crystal clear why that mistake happened. And I want to be able to defend my change. So you're going to have to give us a little time, is my feeling. I am so sympathetic. Unfortunately, my in-laws went through the exact same thing and it's awful. But you have to give, I know you've been living with it since, some of you, 2004, when the first base coat went down. But we have to get, so we've, we've scheduled an earlier meeting, a fourth one for the month. I hope you're okay with that. I just want to do due diligence and get the facts. Yeah, Janet?
So I want to also echo other, the concerns about time because I literally read the attorney's menu memo ten minutes before this started. And so I'm an attorney and I wouldn't be comfortable making a decision without reading that at least two or three more times. But also, what really jumps out at me in that memo, and I know it's not going to answer the frustration, is if we decided today, but there wasn't proper notice, we're going to go back into the, you know, into the whole legal labyrinth. And so if we wait two weeks or three weeks and we give notice and we hear the other side and we make findings and issue a decision and then it gets filed, you know, whatever, it's like, I don't, as an attorney, I don't want to make a decision. I know it's probably, it could be, it's probably defective because of a notice problem. And so I don't want to go there and get involved in that. But I also personally just, I've just read all this. I read your, all the information this afternoon. So I didn't, you know, we didn't get our packets till yesterday. And I read a legal memo with ten minutes to reflect on it. And I, you know, I can't do that. But I really don't want to violate a notice thing, knowing that issue has been flagged. I don't want to put us in that situation, not just, you know, personally because we were bored, but just, it's not going to really help.
Can I just say one word on the notice? Just one word. Not one word, but a couple words.
Have you said on the notice?
On the notice, on the notice. On the notice, on the notice. I wrote my memo. I had a meeting with Ms. Brestrop on October 1st, and she said to me, and I told her about my idea about reversing that. She asked me to write a memo, and I wrote the memo, and then we sent the memo to Town Council to see if he thought it was going to be appropriate to even come here tonight. And on Friday, he gave us an initial answer, saying, "You can come here." So, I didn't give Mr. Parker notice until after I knew we were actually going to be coming here, like, on Friday. So, it's a little short, but I was waiting for Town Council, too, okay? So, I want you to know that.
Michael?
Yeah, I want to apologize to my fellow members of the board. I'd forgotten that you guys, except for you and me, had a 5:00 meeting as well as this meeting.
I was at the 5 also.
Well done, then, I apologize to all of you. And take back most of what I said. I had an extra two hours to read and think about this, whereas you guys didn't. I'm sorry.
We're on five hours here on meeting.
Well, thank you very much for listening.
We did, love it. So, we'll see you in two weeks? And maybe some of you, because it, the site visit is public, and it will be announced like a meeting, so maybe we'll see some of you there.
Could you let us know, like, when you're going to be around the neighborhood?
Chris, how, do you?
Can be in touch with Jim Mastrolexus and let him know when the site visit is? Yep.
Okay.
Right, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Thank you for your patience. Once in a while. So, I'll just ask the board. We're going to try to get the rest done in, like, 20 minutes. So, we'd be on Item 7, new business. Chris sent us the CPTC fall brochure. I think we have it in our packet, and we got an email. I've gone to many of them, they're really great. The biggest problem was they're far away, for the most part.
Do you have money to reimburse people for?
They're like $35 or something, $40.
The price of, yeah, registration, and also, I think, mileage, I think.
All right, and maybe if, so we can email each other for scheduling things. So, you could, if you wanted to go to one, you could, for scheduling things, that's, that's cool. So, you could send it to all of us and say, "Hey, I'm going to this," because we could do carpool. Of course, we don't want to do more than, like, three, because then it's a quorum, but, you know, if someone, because there was one, and I know, I'm just trying to play it straight. Yeah, but when, then there's that whole, well, Chris can weigh in on that. I agree, if, if we're not deliberating or talking about anything that's coming before the board, then that's fine. You just have to be careful, because we're going to, like, say we go for special permits, then you just automatically start diving into, "Oh, did you hear when they said this? It applies for this," and, and we can't do that. But anyways, it's, it's a gray zone, yeah. So, anyways, but I think it's helpful, if anyone is planning to go, please send it out, because then maybe someone else will be like, "Oh, we could split the driving and carpool," and that might, you know, misery loves company, right? So, go together. Are you, do you know of anyone else who's going to any, like?
David said he might go.
You might, okay.
Yeah, but I don't remember, and I don't have that piece of paper in front of me, and so...
It's in your packet.
I know, but it's not right in front of me, it's just...
Pop out an email when you're actually committing, and we'll see if someone else will go. Okay, so I think we can go to Item 8, which is Form A, A and R subdivision applications. Do we have any? Please say no.
We had one submitted, but we haven't heard back from the town engineer, so we're not going to present it to you.
Oh, that's too bad. Okay, good, that's it on that. And, uh, number, okay, 9, upcoming ZBA applications, Pam?
No new ones that I'm aware of.
This is so good, okay. 10, upcoming SPP, SPR, S U B applications.
So, the only one that I'm really aware of is Jonathan Gerfine wanting to grow marijuana at 555 Beltrudown Road, which has not actually been filed with the town clerk yet, because the application isn't complete. But if he completes it by Friday, you will be hearing it on the 6th of November.
Okay, thank you.
Is that the Amherst Winery? Amherst, the Bigfoot?
It's right behind the Amherst Winery. Mr. Gerfine bought the property behind the Amherst Winery.
Okay. I'm going to skip back, because I forgot. Zoning Subcommittee, Item 5, does anyone want to report on that?
I'll start.
David was chairing today, so...
I'll start because of that, but if anyone wants to please chime in, please do. It was, it was a broad conversation about, mostly about affordable housing, but then housing more generally. And, and I think that we're going to, and I believe Janet, you're going to take a whack at looking at the inclusionary zoning bylaws and proposing new language, potentially, and that Maria is going to look at small-scale.
Infill.
Infill potentials to, not just, not just on the issue of affordable housing, but just to increase and diversify the housing supply in the town. But I think that there's a lot of interest in, in this topic. Exactly what the right forum is for it is an ongoing question, too, whether that's the zoning Subcommittee or elsewhere for broader input. Then there is also, and although a lot of mixed signals from my perspective, from Town Council and the zoning Subcommittee, relationships with one another. I think that my sense from today was that, that it would be advisable for the zoning Subcommittee to present to the planning board for consideration future zoning amendments, to then advocate for or not, depending on planning board's deliberations, for the Town Council's approval. And that we should, we should, rather than, as we have been, I believe, kind of waiting for the cues from the Town Council and CRC, rather, we should just take the ball into our court and perceive as, the zoning Subcommittee as a Subcommittee of this body.
So, that's actually how it worked until a year and a half ago.
Yeah.
The zoning Subcommittee came up with the items, worked them through, and then presented to the planning board. We continued to work it through, and then, you know, with staff, got it tight, and then we brought it to town, town meeting. So, that's, that's the way it's always worked, and we've been in this limbo. And I think we were, and we've had big change of the board, you know? So, we changed out, and they changed out, and I think now we can move forward. So, I agree with you. Janet?
So, I was a little confused about whether the CRC is waiting for the zoning Subcommittee to come with some ideas or not. It was a very, it was, I've been, it seems very murky to me, but...
Yeah, I've been talking to them. They have no plan, no firm expectations of us. They're just sort of adrift, yeah. But, but if we come up with this and tell them this is how it's going to be, I think they're like, "Okay." So, yeah.
So, please, this is for my benefit. My understanding, then, is that, that the zoning Subcommittee, if we have proposed changes to the zoning bylaws, that we hash that out, we bring that here, we hash it out, and then we bring it here for the planning board to make a decision about approving potential zoning revision. And that we, we, the planning board, having deliberated, voted, then presents it to the, the, the body, now Town Council, for whether they adopt it or not. Is that right?
The only part is in earlier is town staff is critical on that, too. Right, because they would guide us, or say, "Oh, there's a bigger plan that you don't know about," or whatever. And as Chris said, are you going to repeat, yeah, that?
I would just caution you that I'm not sure Town Council is ready to deal with zoning. So, I think you can continue to work on your zoning amendments. You can bring them to the planning board and discuss them. Eventually, you'll need to have a public hearing before the planning board, but I would wait until we get a clear signal from Town Council that they're ready to consider zoning amendments before you go to the trouble of having the public hearing.
That's true.
But that doesn't mean that you can't keep working on things. Okay?
So, we don't have a timeline, but we should start working.
I'm going to just say this out loud. If we wait, I fear that if we wait for a nod from Town Council, we will be waiting.
I agree. I think that's pretty clear, that Town Council has so many things on its plate.
Yeah.
That they respond to what's given to them. And if we give them something that they have to respond to, then they'll respond to it. Maybe not as quickly as we'd like them to, but they'll have to respond to it.
I agree. And so, and so I would, I'm sorry.
No.
Well, and, and so... As we were talking through this past year, I think proposing small, little bites of the apple, the apple being zoning changes, we, we, we work through, we hash it out here, we present to them if they can't, if they're, if they're up for handling it or not, we're giving them the chance to, we're, you know, incremental, to take it up. If they're not able to, they'll tell us. If they're able to, they won't, you know, then they'll, they'll take care of it. And if they want to adopt, then take on more zoning issues, we'll hopefully be able to meet their requests.
And I just want to add that, we were talking about housing, because I think Mr. Horneck, having recently presented the Housing Policy Trust report that we were supposed to comment on, I think we were trying to sort of piggyback onto that, thinking we could help him out with his five-year plan. And on top of that, maybe they turn into zoning amendment articles that we format in a way similar with, like we used to do for town meetings, and present that to the CRC or Town Council. But that, yeah, it could, we were kind of focusing on housing because of Mr. Horneck's sort of recent presentation to us. And we didn't really respond in our meeting, but we thought maybe we would send our, I think we decided to send our notes to you, Janet, right? Because you were already compiling sort of a list of recommendations that you were sending out.
I was going to compile a list of the recommendations of the two housing studies and the production plan. But I, I think that part of the thing with the policy statement with John Horneck and the AMET, I think we're calling it now, is it's so long, and there's so much in it. And so, you know, kind of, when I think of policy, I think about a, you know, maybe a paragraph statement, and then, you know, some, you know, background information, or, you know... But I think his policy is like, "Let's do something." You know, like, "Let's commit to some very specific goals, and here's a bunch of ways we can get there," kind of thing. And it, but it's, it's like eight pages, it's seven, it's like, it's long. And so, it's kind of hard to, it's hard to talk about it in a way, because there's so much to it. And that kind of just bred a very large discussion.
So, when did, yeah.
Did say you would go back to this on November 6.
Yeah.
That's going to be after the Affordable Housing Forum and after the 40R. So, it will be on your agenda on November 6 to make a recommendation to John Horneck about the housing policy.
So, should we read that policy individually and make comments on it and send them to you? And then you could compile the recommendations? Like, how to?
I'm sorry, you're going to individually?
Like, write, I assume we're going to make a list of items that we want to see added, or more detailed, or whatever?
You will individually send me your comments on the housing policy, whether you're adding to it, or subtracting from it, or reorganizing it, or whatever you're doing? And then we'll bring that list to the meeting on the 6th? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, and then you could just put it all together, and then send it out in our packets, and then that will give us a starting point to sort of narrow it down and figure out what we're all comfortable with. And, because we're not making the policy, we're just trying to look at it from our jurisdiction, and what, you know, I wouldn't want to be recommending on areas that we have no control over, because we're not looking at this as residents. We're looking at this as a planning board, and what we have in our control to help them with housing. So, we could, the last, I assume, do we do a memo or something, Chris? Is that the end, that we would make an agreement on something, and then have an agreed-upon memo?
Often what happens is the planning board makes a recommendation and/or a series of recommendations, and then staff writes a letter listing what the recommendations were. So, that's what I would imagine would happen in this case.
Okay, Maria?
I had that, back when we were studying the housing as a planning board, the Amherst Housing Market Study, Chapter 6, the recommendations that you had, you know, listed, Michael, was a good source for a lot of ideas, and sort of hashing through that chapter is a good idea.
Michael?
Are you done with the, the report, the Subcommittee, the zoning Subcommittee comments? I wondered if you could add to that discussion of housing, the notion that, or come up with some way to close a loophole, which I think exists and really needs to be closed in terms of mixed-use buildings not, not requiring affordable housing units if there are more than 10 apartment units. We have lost a lot of potential affordable units to that loophole in the last five years. And I think that's a loophole that really has to be closed. It won't solve the affordable housing problem, but it'll, it'll help. And I think we can do that through zoning, and we should.
Is that loophole in the use chart? Where is that loophole?
Loophole, if you call it that, is the fact that mixed-use buildings are allowed by site plan review. They don't necessarily require any special permit. They could require a special permit for something, but normally, they just require...
I think the loophole is that the affordable housing requirements apply to developments that are listed under the housing. And the afford, and the mixed-use buildings are not listed under the housing. They're listed in another way. I need to look at them.
I beg to... For your indulgence, but I think they are listed under housing, 3.325. 3.325 is the mixed-use building, and it is listed under housing, which is a residential use. 3.32 is residential uses, and then that is on page, starts at the bottom of page 25, and goes 26, 27, 28, and then mixed-use buildings is at the top of page 29. But is considered a residential use.
Yeah, go ahead, Dana.
But, but I think, but to your point, though, Michael, I think that, I, I agree. And I think that one of the, in my limited exposure to zoning laws and, and issues, is that, that the current definition and, and description of mixed-use building in 3.325 really can be, that those standards need to be fleshed out more, and, and with greater specification, including what the housing units and the types of housing units that are permitted, but also other things, like what kind of retail space, what is, you know, whether parking is required or not, you know, and, and a whole kit and caboodle that's related to mixed use, that, that just had, just, this is too high a level at this point in the town's use of this section, it seems to me.
Yeah, and the relative amount of floor space given over to apartments as opposed to retail or commercial spaces.
Exactly. So, I, I think that that's a big, that's a big zoning Subcommittee, Planning Board issue. What does mixed use mean, and how does it fit in to the greater scheme? Because we've now had a track record of seeing it used in the town, and, you know, what needs to be done better.
Okay. Are we done with zoning Subcommittee for now?
Hell, yeah.
Hell, yeah, okay. So, now I'm going to skip to 11, Planning Board Committee and Liaison Reports. Jack's not here, so Pioneer Valen... Jack's not here, so Pioneer Valley, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, they did have a meeting last Thursday. I did not go, I was at the housing, the HAMAT, AMAT? The AMMAT? Nah, AMHAT. AMHAT, that's it. I was at the AMHAT meeting, but Jack did go to that, so he'll report on that in the next meeting. Michael, is there anything with CPA?
Yeah, they're starting to meet again, that's all.
Great. So we'll have to find someone to take over Agricultural Commission, and if no one here wants it, we can wait for a new member to come and offer it to them, but that will, that is now available.
May I just say something?
Yes.
I think the AgCom would like somebody to be appointed.
Tonight?
Soon.
Soon?
Yeah.
I, I'd be willing to, to, to take that.
Good.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm, I'm going to hold that, I've got a chit for that, that I'm going to keep in my pocket.
Okay. And you can take it as a temporary, if you want, and then offer it to the new person that comes in, especially if you don't like it.
Whatever.
Okay.
So I've got my, I've got my plan.
Okay.
So.
Oh, geez. All right. Thank you, David. That's wonderful. Design, whoop. Yeah.
So do we want to not, I mean, I'm.
Do you want to do that tonight?
Do you like to nominate David to be your AgCom?
I would gladly nominate David to.
I'll second that.
All in, any discussion, I think? All in favor, raise your hand. You can vote for yourself. If you don't, you know, there you go. Unanimous. Thank you. That's great. That was easy. Design Review Board, Michael?
A couple signs have been reviewed and approved, and some have been reviewed and sent away for revision.
Wow. Zoning Subcommittee, we already had a report, but I will say, I, we're both crazy tonight. Maybe we're just overtired at this point. I will also join the zoning Subcommittee. There used to be four people, so probably good to have four again. Plus, it relieves us a little if someone can't make it or that kind of thing. It takes a little pressure off with more members. And I'm doing that also because the Downtown Parking Working Group, hopefully, is fading out over the next month. The report came in, I think, like, two days ago, the final report, so we'll see where that goes. Report of the Chair, item 12. I have nothing to report. I'm, like, out of my mind at this point. 13, Report of Staff.
Thank you for putting up with this very lengthy meeting.
And we'll see you tomorrow night. Adjournment, can we have a motion to close this gig?
Move. Second.
All in favor? We're done. Amherst Media, thank you yet again.